So, welcome. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone who is watching this telecast. I hope you all are well. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, we will be conducting this meeting remotely. As a result of the governor's emergency declaration and his temporary adjustment to the Brown Act, we're able to continue with cities business while also protecting the health and safety of our residents. Consistent with his direction, we have asked that all public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting. And for those who would like to submit in the future, by 4:00 PM to info@villa park.org is how you would submit an email with a public comment. As we get to each item, our city manager will identify all public comments that have been submitted. The meeting is being streamed on our website and VPTV as normally. For those interested, it will be rerun on VPTV and on our website afterwards as regularly done. Hopefully, we will soon all be meeting in person again. Until then, let's get started. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilman Rossini?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Present.
And Mayor Miles?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Alright, today, I would like to ask Councilman Colacott, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, please, uh... Got the flag. Stand and put your hand over your heart and follow me. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America.
Into the Republic. For which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um... Presentations, announcements. So, the first one is the COVID update. And, um... The COVID update is changing constantly. But there are some key points that I want to go through. And again, I think everybody is becoming the resident expert on this, especially all those that are getting the vaccines. And, uh, between the state and the feds and the county, uh, it just is constantly updating. So, I will do my best to identify, uh, information that I obtained either today or information I'm reporting on that is still, um, accurate from Friday. So, the big thing is, uh, the numbers are definitely decreasing in the right direction. Uh, as of Friday, last Friday, the testing positivity was 6.3%. And as of today, it is now at 5.4, which is great. That's even lower than it was back in the, from November when we had that shutdown. The Equity Quartile, the SES, which is the Economic Status Quartile, uh, last Friday it was 8.4, and now it's at 7, which is again, very good because we need that Equity Quartile to mirror what the positivity rate is. Um, so they're getting closer. And the case rate last Friday was 11, uh, or 15.4, and as of today, it's 11.9. So technically, we are, uh, just now in what would be the red or qualifying for the red. We have to maintain or and or continue to decrease those numbers in order to stay in the red tier. And of course, with the red tier, that obviously will help open up our economy. That's going to allow for indoor dining. It's going to, you know, really hopefully get our economy, um, jump-started. So, hoping that that continues in that direction. As far as the pods, the vaccine ended up being delayed because of the weather, uh, so, and also with the winds, but the vaccine was not able to come, uh, be distributed. So, I believe, starting today, um, uh, the Anaheim Convention Center is going to be the location for a second dose of the Moderna, uh, if you had an appointment. Um, and then Disneyland tomorrow only, the 24th, uh, will be open for the second dose for Pfizer. And then I believe it's closing again on Thursday due to the weather. Um, as of last Friday, Dr. Chow mentioned that we had achieved, the county had achieved 50% uh, of our 65 and older had been vaccinated, which is really good. And they're saying that they believe, um, they can do another 25% of those 65 and older, um, in a week, and then another 25% after that. So hopefully, within a couple of weeks, um, the population of our 65 and older in Orange County will be, uh, vaccinated at least, at least with, um, one, if not both, of the doses. And again, they're stating that, uh, you have 85% um, confer immunity at 85% with just at least the first dose. So, it's a good start. Um, two weeks ago, the, um, state had, uh, added health educators and childcare providers and agriculture industry to the group of eligible participants for the vaccine, which is great, but also kind of problematic because you still don't have, um, the available quantities of vaccines. However, um, the new allotments that are coming, the county is going to be putting aside 30% to be able to accommodate for those new, um, uh, participants in that, in that group, along with, um, 16 to 64-year-olds who are compromised health-wise. Um, I believe on March 7th, uh, Blue Shield will be taking over the primary distribution of the vaccine. And, um, right now, you can go to CVS or Rite Aid. And, uh, as of last Friday, what was reported is that there are 10 stores in CVS that are doing 100 doses per day of the vaccine, but you must register on the website. And these are 10 stores within Orange County. And then 30 stores within Orange County of Rite Aid are doing 20 doses, five days a week. Uh, but again, you must register via the website. And then, um, I believe Ultimate, which has nine locations in Orange County and a clinic in Mahabharata are getting their, um, vaccine doses straight from the federal government. And, um, you can contact them and get a vaccine that way as well. So, um, Villa Park is looking much better as far as we aren't increasing our numbers as rapidly. And, uh, today, we had 289, and that was a consistent number, uh, for the past two days. Friday, last Friday, it was at 287, and that number, we had, um, I think it was 286 two days prior to that. So if you remember, we were having increases every single day. And now we're kind of slowing down on how much we're increasing, which is a really good sign. So, that's kind of it for the COVID update. Um, hopefully, you guys don't have any questions, but I'll try to answer if you do. So, are there any questions?
Not a question, but, uh, Mayor, I got my, um, first COVID vaccination this morning.
Oh, great.
Keep my sister in to get her first vaccination yesterday, and my mom got hers last week, so...
Fantastic.
This is all through Kaiser.
Okay, and did you have any, um, like, serious side effects or are you feeling okay?
Yeah, I had to delay having my breakfast.
Oh, wow. Great, okay.
Really good shot. No, no, uh, no reaction whatsoever.
Perfect, good.
I had a quick question. Um, I was curious about, uh, the community outreach. If people have been contacting City Hall and maybe, uh, city manager can talk to advice. I know that we had several people were asking about, uh, getting set up on the Athena app for a while. Has there been a lot of reach out to you at the, at City Hall?
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Councilman. It's a good question. We have, those calls have started to diminish. The county has set up a hotline, and we've started publishing that. Uh, so they'll help people get on in all languages, uh, which is useful. The other thing you're going to see is that we've partnered with Serrano Water District. So in the next water bill that every resident gets in Villa Park, there'll be a flyer that the city paid for and gave with the contact information of where they can get their vaccines and who to call with phone numbers. So everybody, every resident in Villa Park will be receiving that, uh, with their next water bill. So please don't just throw it away as junk. Uh, that will be coming out. Uh, and then we are getting less and less calls, but people are, uh, obviously very concerned. Real quickly, you're going to hear about the Johnson &amp; Johnson. That's coming out this week. The, the, the feds are reviewing that. Uh, that's a one-dose, um, shot vaccine. Uh, it's important to note that the studies show that only to have a efficacy at this point of about 76%, which is significantly lower than, um, than the, um, other Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines. So there are some real questions about how that's going to be used. So the thought of the health officer, his prediction, uh, today, in, in listening to him, was that they were going, that he will probably recommend that those go to the Johnson &amp; Johnson single-shot, go to the younger, uh, population age 16 and above who have less chance of getting it, less severe if they do get it, and they are single-dose, and so it might be easier to get them. And, but that's something that they've got to work out. Uh, the other real problem that they're countering is that when they add that, the category, the 1B that the mayor mentioned, that's 1.2 million people in Orange County. They're doing about 10,000 vaccines a day in Orange County. So you start seeing whether the backlog that will happen. Uh, that's a real problem. And then secondarily, the issue is, uh, they're trying to figure out how they'll get proof of verification that somebody is qualified because somebody just walks in and says, "I work for a school district," or "I work for a grocery store." Do they get it? You know, so that's something that the health department is kind of grappling with at this time. So there's a lot of unknowns about how the rest rolls out, but it's, uh, they've been promised, um, instead of 40,000 doses a week, like 70,000 doses a couple of times a week. So that will be a significant boost over the next couple of months.
Hey, Steve. Question, um, will eBay customers also get the same flyer?
Uh, I guess, I, as I understand it, according to, um, the Serrano Water District, they send it to everybody. They're going to be sending it to everybody regardless. So there'll be a copy. Uh, and it was interesting with hearing from, talking to them that they actually have people that will come in and pay with cash, some older people. So, uh, they are real, they were very anxious. The board was very excited about partnering with the city because they know there are seniors that don't have any electronic access and still pay old-fashioned ways. So they thought it would be a good way to reach those clients and the best way we probably can reach the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add on the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine? Um, one of the great things about it is that if you get that vaccine, you're much less likely to die from COVID and probably a lot less likely to spread COVID if you've had that vaccine.
Great. Any, anybody else? Okay, um, and in case I didn't mention it, I just want to make sure that tomorrow at the Disneyland site, it's for the Pfizer second dose. And the Anaheim Convention Center, right now, is for the Moderna second dose. So I wasn't sure if I made that clear or not, but alright, moving on. Orange County Sheriff's Department, Captain Pitts, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Hope everyone's doing well. Uh, this month, um, I want to talk a little bit about catalytic converter theft. Um, we've been pretty fortunate in Villa Park where we haven't had any of these incidents, but our surrounding areas, uh, surrounding cities have seen a dramatic increase in this type of theft. Um, it's really easy for, uh, these guys to pull this off. And we just want to, you know, let our, our residents know, um, that this is important to protect their property because it can take their vehicle out of service for some time, obviously. Um, what happens is these guys basically, uh, go underneath the vehicle, cut the catalytic converter off as part of the exhaust system in the, because they want to recycle it for the metals that are inside. So we want to take some steps to prevent that from happening. Uh, if we can, preferably park the, your vehicle in your garage, a well-lit area, like your driveway. Uh, parking in some other area where there's lighting. If you have motion cameras and motion lights, that'll help. Also, um, one of the things with this is when these things are taken, it's really hard for us to identify who the victim is if we catch, uh, folks later on after they've committed the crime. Sometimes they'll have, you know, a half dozen of these things in their car, and there's no way to trace it back to a vehicle. So we recommend that you engrave your vehicle identification number on the, um, catalytic converter itself. You can probably have their mechanic do that. And then there's also a, uh, like a clamp that will help secure the catalytic converter to your vehicle and make it harder to steal. Uh, these things can range from, you know, $300 to replace and repair to $1,000. And, you know, the, the biggest thing is probably if you're relying on that vehicle to go to work, you're not going to be able to drive it to work for a few days despite the, or in addition to the economic impact of that theft. So you want to be able to look out of that if you see suspicious people around your vehicle, especially in the early morning hours, middle of the night. Please call us at our dispatch center, uh, 647-7000, 714-647-7000. And, uh, so that's it for that. That's a little kind of crime prevention there. Um, this past month, we had 290 calls for service. Out of those calls, we are, uh, part one crime incidents. We had, uh, one grand theft on Hazel Circle where, um, some vehicle accessories, uh, molding, chrome trim, and whatnot from the vehicle was taken from the vehicle. That was kind of an interesting one. And then we had a vehicle burglary on Hillcrest where some tools were stolen from the vehicle. And that's it for that stuff. Uh, traffic incidents, we issued 20 citations for, uh, vehicle code violations, uh, moving or equipment violations, and we issued 12 parking citations. We did have three traffic collisions this past month. Uh, one of them was, uh, non-injury where a dump truck collided with a fire hydrant. And that can be messy. And that was on Santiago and Sherwood. And then on Santiago and Center, a bicyclist collided with two vehicles, um, crossing through, uh, like an intersection area. And then on Santiago and Wanda, there was a hit-and-run, uh, vehicle backed out and sideswiped another vehicle. And that concludes the report. Any questions?
Uh, I just have a few there. Captain?
Sir.
Congratulations, sir. Well-deserved and well-earned and a good change for the, for the agency. Uh, and deserved, deserved. Um, I want to echo your sentiments on the catalytic converters theft. Uh, it's been my professional experience that it is, um, uh, it was on the rise back when our economy plummeted back in, uh, 2007, eight, and nine. Uh, we're seeing a huge resurgence of that again. So, um, just, uh, echoing your sentiments. Uh, but with respect to the traffic enforcement piece, um, I've seen a couple of emails. I think, um, uh, Councilman Pitts was on one of them. Um, I, I've seen just a ton of, um, uh, cars, um, high-end cars, uh, project cars, whatever, racing up and down Valley and Center and Taft and, uh, many, uh, Saravella, running stop signs. So whatever effort, um, additional effort, I should say, can be put towards enforcement would be greatly appreciated just to, you know, keep so many of our walkers and, uh, our kids and, and just our families safe, um, and obviously the other drivers. So want to appreciate all the efforts, but if you, uh, could just kind of pass that on. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, in reference to that, um, we did brief on that with our deputies that are in Villa Park and the, uh, surrounding county areas about it, um, so they're aware of it and, you know, being a little more proactive. Uh, we want to again encourage people, if they're seeing folks that are driving recklessly, to call us so that we can, you know, generate a call for service in addition to us just being out there and proactively patrolling it. So we have something, you know, uh, on record that, hey, this, this incident happened. Because a lot of times, you know, the deputy's over there and there's nothing going on, then they're going to leave the area. So if we keep getting those calls to go back there, then we can, uh, kind of pinpoint hopefully the timeframe that this is happening and maybe do a little better job of, uh, catching those folks.
Absolutely. Appreciate it, sir.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Um, Captain, I have a comment to, to what, uh, Councilman Rossini and what you guys were just discussing, but also real quick, have, do you know of any, um, catalytic converter thefts in Villa Park?
Uh, I do not know of any recent ones, and I, I scoured all the reports from last year and didn't see any. Um, doesn't mean I didn't necessarily miss one because it's not a specific category that, um, you know, we would track it. Uh, so we have to kind of comb through all the, you know, the reports. So, um, I haven't seen any, but I do know that, you know, the surrounding cities around Villa Park and our South County, um, areas, uh, Arroyo, Volinda City, um, Rossmore area, you know, has had a pretty significant increase, and it is definitely county-wide.
Yeah. And then, uh, to Councilman Rossini's point, and I echo everything, um, you know, anything that, that the sheriff can do to, um, you know, help curtail the racing, and it's bad. It's gotten really bad. So we've been here 17 years in May, and, um, not only the volume of cars, but, um, you know, the frequency of, you know, drivers, and, uh, it's really bad. And to your point, you know, I used to call, so I live right on the corner of Santiago and, um, and, and Lemon. And so I think it's like exactly a quarter mile from stop sign to stop sign. So they gun it through that stop sign and see how fast they can go. Um, and I used to call a long time ago, but unfortunately, then I always felt like I was wasting the sheriff's time because by the time I made the call and the time that somebody drove by, they were long gone. So it's kind of hard and frustrating as a resident to be able to say, well, I'm going to call because you don't want to waste your time. And you guys stop what you're doing and come and look, and I'm like, I swear they went by. So I think it's very frustrating, um, to have this going on in our city. And we know it's going on, especially for those of us that live on these streets. And, um, and, and, and it has increased significantly and, and long, as well as, you know, people out walking and stuff, and it is dangerous. So, and I've offered many times, anytime any of your sheriff want to use my driveway, they are more than welcome to sit there for as long as they'd like. Um, so, but we appreciate everything that you're doing and, um, and I, I, you know, hope everyone stays safe and appreciate your update.
Thank you.
And, uh, just to comment, I, I think, um, the more reports that we get, the more trending analysis we can do and the determination that there is something going on. If, if people just post it on Facebook and don't do anything to report the problems, the sheriff doesn't know about it.
Yeah.
Can't patrol certain areas and do certain things that would curtail those kinds of activities. So it's very, very important, whether we think it's right or not to call, we should call all the time so that we have records of those incidents so that they can start to build trend information and so forth about the incidents and so forth that are going on. So important to call, and, and I realize that some people don't want to do that, but more helps.
Well, and I think you're absolutely right. Um, and I was, you know, at fault for deciding, you know, well, I'm just, whatever, it's over and there, you know, it, I didn't want to waste their time. But, um, perhaps that's something that we can do as a council and start bringing, um, more awareness to our residents to encourage them to make that phone call. Because I was, I was guilty one that would just not call. So, um, maybe that's something we can all do in our own social network is encourage our residents that we do have to call, like you said, Councilman Pitts, that it's, uh, it's extremely important, and I see that. And, um, you know, definitely want to, want to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. So, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, could I, I'll just add on that if you don't mind, um, you know, calling it, it is time-sensitive. And nine times out of 10, we're probably not going to get there when they're there. But it does allow us to get some data points that we can say, hey, we're always getting calls on Tuesdays, Thursdays between 7:00 PM and 11:00. That's when we're getting the most of the calls. So then we can look at it and say, hey, let's do some extra enforcement on those dates and times. It gives us a target, uh, time that we can do that stuff as opposed to not knowing and not having any, uh, input from the community when it's happening. And we're just kind of blindly going out there and, you know, hoping that luck comes into play. And we just happen to turn on the street at the same time that, you know, this violation is going on. So, um, please call, even if it's, uh, hey, we just want a patrol check for, you know, speeding vehicles. Give them a vehicle description, and we can have our folks kind of look at that. And, you know, if we can get a license plate or we know it's, hey, it's, you know, I can tell the deputies, hey, we're getting a lot of calls about, um, you know, a red, uh, you know, Nissan Z. Then, you know, guys can look for that type of stuff. So it gives us some little data to work off of.
Thank you. Yeah, great discussion and great, um, definite, uh, points taken. So, okay, uh, Orange County Fire Authority Chief Hunter.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Counsel. This is a report since our last meeting, last council meeting on June 26th. There were 34 incidents within the city of Villa Park that OCFA was dispatched to and arrived on scene of. Um, two of them of, uh, significance in nature was a small vegetation fire, which is extinguished by, um, arriving units. And the second one was not in the city of Villa Park, but the neighboring, uh, community of Orange Park Acres. Engine 23 from Villa Park was first on scene of a structure fire there. Uh, the back patio was well-involved. It was an enclosed patio. Uh, they aggressively attacked the fire, and they prevented the fire from spreading into the house, um, which leads me into our safety talk, which is making sure you have an escape plan during a structure fire. Every 24 seconds, a fire department responds to a fire in the United States. Um, about every 63 seconds, there is a house fire that occurs. So it's important for you to have a plan to escape your residence in the run of a house fire. Um, we want to remind you to create a safe practice, um, to have a home escape so you and your family can safely exit your homes. When the smoke alarm sounds, quickly get out of the house. Make sure you had a plan that was drawn out with two exits out of every room, if possible. Walk through your home to make sure the escape routes are clear. Choose an outside meeting place that everybody knows of where they can meet. Make sure your house number is visible so when we arrive on scene that we can easily locate your residence. Uh, and practice your escape plan twice a year. A good time to do that is usually when you change the batteries with your, uh, smoke alarms and vacuum out to clean and maintain them. Make sure that if you have any windows with security bars, that they operate, and you can exit by releasing them so you can get out of your home. And teach your family members to close the doors as they evacuate because that helps prevent the spread of the fire throughout your structure or your home. Know what to do if a fire occurs, smoke and heat rise. So make sure you stay low and try to stay as low to the ground as you can by crawling on your way out. Feel the doors before you open them to see if there's heat. If there's heat behind the door when you feel it, um, make sure you use a, choose another alternative route to exit your home. And once you get out of your house, stay out of your house, no matter what. Um, planning in advance goes a long way to keep you and your family safe, especially in the event if you do have a structure fire. I wanted to provide you with a quick update on our two injured firefighters from the Silverado Fire. Um, one of them was released from the hospital, um, in late December, went home and started his rehabilitation. The second one was released from the hospital last Wednesday and went to a rehabilitation center, um, to start his rehabilitation. Both of them have a long road of recovery ahead of them. Um, but again, I want to thank everybody, especially the community of, uh, Villa Park as well as Orange County for supporting these firefighters and their families in their time of need, and they really, really appreciate the support. And that's all I have in the report.
Well, that's fantastic news. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. And, um, you know, we truly, truly appreciate everything that, that you and, and your team do and, um, wish the best to the firefighters in a long road of recovery, but I have a feeling they're going to be tough, so... And Vince, I see a hand. Is that like intentional? There's a hand. Are you raising your hand?
No, in fact, I have my hands crossed in front of me right now.
On your Zoom, there's a little raised hand.
Hmm, not at all.
Okay, just, I just...
There's both hands.
I just want to make sure you weren't trying to pop in. Okay. Does anybody have, uh, any comments for the chief? Nope, perfect. Okay, thank you very much, chief. All right, Shauna, our librarian who, yay, we get to see you this time.
I don't want to talk about that last month. Good evening, everyone. Um, next month, our NEA Big Read program kicks off, and that's a program from the National Endowment for the Arts where we invite everybody to read the same book and participate in a variety of programs surrounding the book. And this year, our title that was selected is "Lab Girl" by Hope Jaren. And to find out about all the programs, just visit ocpl.org and scroll down to NEA Big Read, and you can find out about everything that we have planned. And there's an event coming up in March I want to let you know about. Author Jennifer Ackerman, um, is doing a presentation. She's an author who writes about science and nature, and she wrote "The Bird Wave", a look at how birds work, play, and parent. So all the programs are remote this year, and if you visit the website, uh, you'll see how you can get registered. Next month, our poetry group is meeting on March 25th at 5:30, and we'll be talking about some of the poets from the Harlem Renaissance. So to register for that one, just give us an email or call and let us know your information. And our book group is also meeting on the 25th. They're going to meet in the morning at 11:00 AM. They'll be discussing "John Woman" by Walter Mosley. And it's the same process to register. Just let us know, uh, what your email address is, and we'll send you first a participation agreement and then, uh, a link to the Zoom meeting for the program. And we started giving away crafts for children every month. And we start with a pretty good supply at the beginning of the month, and they go quickly. But next month, we're giving out kits to make a monster finger puppet. So you can come by and pick up kits to make your own little finger puppet monsters. And just a reminder, our... your own little finger puppet monsters. And just a reminder, our hours right now, we're, we're open from 11 to 7 Tuesday through Thursday, and then from 9 to 5 on Fridays and Saturdays we're open. Now this year, OC Public Libraries is hitting a major milestone. We are celebrating our 100th year of service. So we'll be having a lot of things going on over the year to celebrate. And right now we have a 100 book, book, a 100 book challenge on our website. Um, so just go there and you can see how to get involved and I'll keep you posted on the other events as they come up. And is there anything I can answer for you? Any question?
I have a, I have a question. Um, so I know over the summer you're very active and trying to include and involve a lot of the kids. And so have you guys had any discussions on what you think you'll be able to do for the summer this, this summer?
You know, it's, we're really trying to visualize what the summer will look like. Right now we have, we have a lot of programs that are happening, um, kind of system wide programs for all age groups. We're trying to decide what we should do next. We've, we've, we're thinking that our kids have had so much screen time with remote schooling and we're just trying to get creative with what we can do. Um, if you have any ideas or suggestions and hopefully we'll have more opportunity um, to meet and to do programming. So, you know, we're starting to brainstorm and think about it, but it's hard to visualize right now exactly what it will look like.
Do it outdoors, whatever you do.
Yeah. And as things keep getting better, I think that's a possibility.
Hey, anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay. Well, Shawna, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to council member meeting attendance reports. The first one is Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control. That's me. Uh, so we met on 2/18. Um, the county vector control did a urine review and in the interest of time, I'm just going to ask that, um, it'll be on our website and it lists the urine review, everything um, uh, from, you know, what was purchased, what was um, you know, allocated, um, board activities, uh, information regarding um, education programs and stuff. So, uh, that'll be available on the website if anybody wants to know. But what I'd like to report on um, is of course it's not mosquito season right now. Uh, what we're dealing with is um, actually typhus with flea, um, fleas and ticks. So, um, the numbers that we had uh, on the 18th was um, there were 385 flea samples, um, flea and tick samples. 16 of them um, were found on rats that were positive for uh, flea borne typhus and 50 of them were found on possums, believe it or not. And we are getting ready for spring, which means an increase in the mosquito activity. Um, as of the 18th, there were 12 dead birds that were tested uh, for West Nile virus and there was no West Nile virus found. There is an uptick in um, the red imported fire ant activity, which is very normal for this time of year. And then um, it was announced that Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, you know, they've been in the Garden Grove location for quite some time and they're outgrowing it. So there is a um, building that they're looking at in Santa Ana off of Dyer. And tomorrow we will be meeting virtually to go through that. I'm part of the Budget and Finance Committee, but also um, was added to the Operations Committee. And so the um, Building Property and Equipment and the Budget and Finance Committee are meet, meeting virtually tomorrow to take a look at this facility um, off of Dyer in Santa Ana that they can move to that will um, allow them to continue to grow and expand. So that is it. If there are any questions about?
Just one, just one. Oh, go ahead, Vince.
No, no, go ahead, Robbie. Please.
The, the fleas and ticks and, and all those vermin, uh, have they found any in Villa Park? Is this?
Nope.
Okay, good.
No, yeah, thank you. I forgot.
Dead birds or any, any of that stuff? Okay, good.
Nope. Vince?
Uh, question on that building, would that be a long-term lease or a purchase or is that uh?
A purchase.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Uh, who's the previous tenant of that building?
It was a uh, like a hot, hot rod magazine. Um, uh, so they, they um, printer for like Hot Rod Magazine is what we kind of told briefly. So they, and that's one of the good things is they have a bay for the vehicles because it's, you know, mosquito uh, vector control has a lot of vehicles and that was one of the concerns is where are they going to find someplace, you know, to do all the work and maintenance and has to be indoors. And so this particular place does have an indoor area where they did a lot of the um, work on hot rods and photo shoots on hot rods and things like that. So. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Uh, Orange County Sanitation District.
So I have, uh, I attended meetings in the last month for Orange County SAN. Um, the January 27th meeting was the board meeting. Jan-, uh, February 3rd was the operations committee meeting. February 4th was an orientation. February 17th was a strategic planning and February 18th was a virtual tour. Um, I'm going to, in the interest of time, kind of give some notes that I have uh, aggregated from those. Uh, in the board meeting, we had a fantastic presentation on the final update of the GWRS, the groundwater replenishment system, uh, which sits adjacent to Plant One uh, in OC SAN. Uh, the highlights of that um, don't really impact our citizens here, but they did have some great stuff about next to Plant Two, the remaining pump station reconstruction and flow equalization tank, and then the pi- pipeline rehabilitation between Plants One and Plants Two. Um, the upshot of all of that is that it will increase the current treatment capability from 100 million gallons per day to 130 million gallons per day. Um, and then in the operations committee meeting, we talked about some upcoming projects. Uh, the OC SAN has got lots of different stuff that they're involved in. The two we talked about at this point were the uh, Bay Bridge in Newport Beach and uh, the Taft Branch improvements, which are right next to us here in Orange. Uh, the Taft Branch runs along Taft up Tustin and then along Meats. Uh, and the work they're doing that they're contracting there is on Meats, uh, around the 55 freeway. There's um, uh, the contract has been awarded, but there is no date set for that work. Um, the strategic planning meeting, I'll try to, to give some more updates on that. In the next couple of months, we have a, a few other meetings. OC SAN is very well organized. They do a great job of uh, being very thorough on all of their um, planning for the future. And uh, I'm continually impressed by the, the, the group.
Great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right. Orange County Fire Authority.
Uh, no meeting to report, uh, unfortunately due to a pretty significant illness. I was unable to attend, but I'll uh, I'll give you an update next month.
We're glad you're better.
Thank you.
Uh, Orange County Library Advisory Board.
Uh, we have a follow-up meeting on February 18th to our January meeting where we talked about the um, the set aside organization. As I think I mentioned previously, there's a, a lot of learning to do. So this was mostly an informative meeting for the, the newer members of the OC Lab, uh, going over what the allocation formula is for uh, the library and um, probably not that significant to uh, our library here and how we're set up. I'm going to curtail that report there. If anybody has questions about that, there's a great presentation and they have developed more work and I'm happy to share that with you, but um, it doesn't really impact our residents all that much.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Uh, City Schools Advisory.
Uh, we also had a meeting yesterday, January, or February 22nd. Unfortunately, uh, I was not able to attend and I will provide notes on that and give a report on that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Law Enforcement Advisory.
No meeting, but we have a tentative meeting uh, in March, uh, the 16th at 5:00 PM. That's subject to change of course, but that's what we're looking at. Obviously we've been discussing some matters with Captain Knutson and there's a few others that will be uh, obviously agendized and, and discussed. And I would uh, invite anybody to send in their comments or concerns uh, about um, what's going on in, in, in our community and uh, potentially even within the county. Um, you've got a wealth of knowledge within the committee and uh, look forward to meet with everybody. That's it.
That's great. Thanks. And I, I really look forward to seeing what you guys um, come up with and your discussions. Cause I, I do think that we are as a city um, becoming, there's a, there's a problem that's brewing and it's whether it's the speeding or whether it's blowing through the stop signs. You know, there's no doubt that our um, numbers and volume have increased. And so, you know, it'd be great to see um, kind of what the discussions and what ends up happening with, with, you know, the um, LEAC committee and in all the uh, expertise that you guys have to be able to give us some, you know, suggestions perhaps, or at least have a really good discussion about it. So looking forward to that one.
Thank you.
All right. Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
Thank you. Make sure my mute button's off. Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, the Community Services Foundation has been significantly busy over the last several months, trying to figure out the best approach to support, you know, the city during this pandemic. You know, prior to last month, I think, I think Mayor, we talked about this in one of the previous council meetings, but um, the, the foundation made arrangements in conjunction with city staff for the Taiwan Chamber of Commerce to donate 15,000 masks to donate to various civic and local entities for use. So we really appreciate that effort. I think you were there at the, um, Madam Mayor, you were there to receive the mask from the Taiwan Chamber of Commerce. So we appreciate that effort. Uh, during our board meeting last month, the foundation board, I'm excited to say voted unanimously to donate 75,000 in funding to invest in our city park known as Villa Park Knowles, named after our 24 by seven superhero, Mike Knowles. Uh, these funds will be added to the already dedicated funds by the city to create an amazing park for all of us to enjoy. Um, most recently, the Villa Park Community Services Foundation embarked upon a diversity and inclusion effort within the city to recognize and educate others in the many diverse cultures and religions that exist in our community. I don't know if anybody has noticed this or not, but our, our community is becoming more and more diverse every day. And it's good that we're able to celebrate the, the, the many different cultures that exist. Uh, the first event was held uh, this past weekend in celebration of the Lunar New Year, led by Jordan Wu and other board members, along with folks from our community. Our mayor was there along with our city manager and his wife. Um, this was, this event was held at City Hall on Saturday and we had great attendance. It was a very festive event. And I, I can tell you to look forward to other events planned throughout the year to celebrate, celebrate our many cultures. So stay tuned to that. Thank you.
Great. Yeah. Jordan, uh, Jordan did a great job at the decorations and um, um, outlining, you know, what everything meant. And uh, it was great to see the families come up and participate. And, and again, such a great cultural event to learn uh, about, you know, cultures and, and um, activities that we share with our other residents. So uh, that was a great job. Appreciate that.
Yeah. I think we recognized o- over time that we had not, you know, celebrated the many cultures that we have. So this is a start and I'm real pleased that there are a group of people within the foundation that are dedicated to, you know, bringing this to light and, you know, creating a diversity and inclusion uh, effort within the city.
Yep. And I look forward to seeing what they come up with next, especially with, you know, what a broad range of diverse ethnicities we have in our community. So um, you know, a lot of great minds over there. So thank you. And the Housing Legislative Committee, we have not had a meeting. Uh, we will be meeting um, uh, March 9th, I believe. Uh, Bridges at Kramer Place, there was no meeting. And then the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. Um, we had, it's also known as um, SCAC, S-C-A-C. Uh, so there was a SCAC meeting and then within SCAC, there are different subcommittees like uh, Transportation and then Health and Nutrition. So I sit on the Health and Nutrition Subcommittee of the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. So I have an update for both. So we had two meetings. So on SCAC, the Senior Citizens Advisory Council, actually, um, that general meeting was on February 19th. We had a special speaker, um, Jack Garrot, Garrett, Garrett, Garrity from OCTA. And um, he basically went over and discussed that uh, SMP program. 32 of the 34 cities participated in that and that's, we are one of those cities. And as most of you know, but in case for our residents who are listening, um, that program is available to residents uh, that are 60 years of age or older. It's funded through Measure Two or OC GO. A majority of the trips that people use for these uh, senior mobility programs are for nutrition. So um, a lot of the senior centers that they go to will have um, uh, allow these seniors to go and, and have um, nutritious meals. Uh, for because of COVID and the senior centers, senior centers shut down, um, what they had to do was revisit their bylaws and the um, the SMP program then started bringing these meals to the seniors. So it was good that um, they weren't just gone to waste and seniors were still able to get uh, part of their nutrition uh, program, be a part of the nutrition program. And speaking of that, with the Health and Nutrition um, Committee, so we had a speaker from Alzheimer's OC and Memory Care. And there's a program that I didn't know existed. Um, it's for the Alzheimer's and dementia network. And there is um, a building in Costa Mesa. Uh, it's the campus of uh, Fairview Developmental Center. It reopened as an alternate COVID care facility. So what they were finding is if you had somebody that um, let's say you had, uh, let's say you took care of your, your, your elderly parent and you yourself were not, you know, young. So your elderly parent gets COVID and then you get COVID, uh, who takes care of whom? So this um, organization was able to um, open up a 50-bed unit in this campus. Um, and it's in Costa Mesa to house seniors who were COVID positive and um, lived in this congregate kind of environment, right? So I have COVID, you have COVID, I can't take care of you. So the senior would then go to this facility and be taken care of while they were recovering from um, from COVID. So uh, that opened up on 12/28. It's still ongoing. If anybody knows of a family that is in that situation where they need to find um, uh, temporary care for a COVID positive individual and you yourself have COVID, you can call 714-957-5000. Um, we also had another speaker uh, from the American Heart Association. And um, if we can put up on the screen, um, either one, doesn't matter, either the stroke or the heart attack. And they just kind of revisited some, since all the talk of COVID, people sometimes forget that there's other ailments going on. So, um, it was very educational and they were talking about stroke symptoms in men versus women. And so um, this was put up by the American Heart Association and we'll have this on the website as well. But uh, it listed all the different lists, all the different uh, different types of symptoms that can be a sign of stroke in men and women. And if you notice, the women have a lot more. Um, and then uh, they also did it for heart attack. So if we can put the heart attack one up as well, again, versus men versus women. So um, a lot of the symptoms, you know, people will shrug off. It's like, oh, I just don't feel whatever. So they just really encouraged that yes, even though, you know, COVID is here, a lot of these symptoms can also be signs of COVID, but it can be signs of heart attack as well. So don't dismiss it. So they really want you to notify your primary care provider. And then they gave some statistics. Um, that heart disease is the number one killer in women worldwide. So um, we have to take care of our hearts ladies. One in three deaths annually are due to heart disease and um, twice as many women die of stroke than breast cancer. And um, stroke impacts more women than men, but men are impacted as well. And then they also talked about there are some new guidelines. So if you remember, it was always uh, for the diastolic and systolic blood pressure, two years ago, it used to be um, if, you know, you wanted to be at like 130 over 80. And what they found is, is that if you were already at 130 over 80, you were kind of already on your way to having some sort of heart disease or something where it was going to require medication. So now the target heart um, rate is 120 over 80. And this should help um, catch earlier on um, symptoms or possible um, uh, pre-existing conditions that maybe would have shown its face a little bit more. that maybe would have shown its face a little bit more broadly if you waited till it was 130 over 80. So those are some new targets. A lot of information. I am the representative for our district, District Three, which is Norvalinda, Tustin, Irvine, Orange, and Villa Park for the senior center. So I'll be contacting the senior centers in Orange and working with them. So that is it for my Senior Citizens Advisory Council and Health and Nutrition. Are there any questions? No? Okay. Councilman Colacott, do you have any update for us on SCAG?
No, I've never heard from SCAG at all. I do have a couple of questions regarding the, I understand we've got a housing committee meeting. It's the first I've heard of that. What time will that be and where is that?
Oh, there was an email sent out, I think it was a, sent out two days ago. It's going to be March 9th and it's Zoom. Or I think we might try and have it in-house, but I think it's Zoom for right now, but perhaps in-house. And that is March 9th on 5 o'clock.
Public hearing too, isn't it?
Pardon?
Is it public hearing too?
Public hearing as well, yes.
Okay, looks like I'll be able to make that. I'd like, we moved pretty quickly through some of the committee meetings. The, Robbie, you mentioned the Community Services Foundation that your donate, the Community Services Foundation is proposing to contribute $75,000 for the Wanda Green Belt.
Yes, sir.
My understanding is that the Community Services Foundation was established about 20 years ago to support community activities like the Boat Parade and the Santa Tour and, you know, the Fourth of July Parade, those sorts of things, and perhaps like the Winter Wonderland. Todd, is, is donating money towards maintenance of a municipal facility within our charter? Of the community?
It wasn't, it wasn't dedicated to maintenance. It was to build and invest in the park itself.
Yeah, is the Community Services Foundation charter, does that encompass that?
Yeah, so it's in the Articles of Incorporation and in the bylaws, and it enumerates the purposes of the foundation. And I believe one of them is the improvement of aesthetic benefits and recreational opportunities for the community. I apologize, I'm having camera problems. So I do believe it's within the purview of the foundation. But I will double check that and circulate to everybody just to make sure everybody's comfortable with that.
Okay. And also, Robbie, since the Community Services Foundation was established specifically for the purposes of community activities, it seems like the Winter Wonderland would fall squarely in the, the purview of the Community Services Foundation. I would like to encourage you to propose to the board that they take that activity over as well.
Okay.
And that'd free up some city funds for some of our core responsibilities, like infrastructure maintenance.
Yeah, all of the, with the exception of the, and they still support that effort for, for the Winter Wonderland. But most all the things that you brought up are already budgeted for this year and were budgeted last year as well and would have had them, as you know, if it hadn't been canceled by COVID, so.
Yeah. I'm just saying that if the Community Services Foundation could address some of the primary responsibilities that, or activities that it was established for, that would free up some city funds for some additional street maintenance or, you know, sewer maintenance or other issues that are, you know, really what the, you know, is the primary responsibility of the city.
Okay.
Great.
I think they are, I think they are, but it's.
I think they are too. If I can just offer the counterpoint, I think that them supporting the, the Knowles project is fantastic. I think that becomes more of a community space and community service really contributing to that is a fantastic idea. I really think that they're doing a great job.
Okay, it's, it's nice that they do those things, but the city needs to make sure that we're, we're sticking to our knitting too.
But I think you'll find that the $75,000 could help all the funds currently has dedicated to that.
Good point. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other discussion on this? No? All right. So then at this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, is there anyone that wrote in from the public that would like to comment?
No, Mayor.
Great. Okay. We will now move.
May, before we proceed, since we had a closed session, I'm obligated to report that we, we did discuss public employee performance evaluation, City Manager Government Code Section 54957, but there was no reportable action. So for the record.
Thank you. Now we will move into our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is a review to waive in reading, the reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff a word.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the monthly item we place on here to expedite the process of the meetings and by, by reducing the time required to read the material in full. So with that, we recommend approval.
Council, do we have any questions? Steve, is there anyone that wrote in for this?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any other discussion regarding this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Perfect. Steve, can you call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Okay, the next item is item number three that we re, got removed. So.
For the record, for the record, Mayor, let me just report that we received a correspondence from the applicant, Mr. Bruce Walters, who indicated on Monday, February 22nd, that he would like to remove the item from the agenda and discuss working with city staff at a later date. So at his request, we are asking that the item be removed from the agenda and not agendized at this point, anything further.
And we don't.
No action required.
Just as a matter of comment, first of all, the, the applicant continued this item. First of all, the, the committee, they constructed something without a permit that required a permit. And then they came after the fact, asking for a variance for that, that illegal construction. And then when the, it was pretty clear that the project would not be approved, they waited until the last moment to, to pull it from the agenda, costing city staff time to, you know, in the interim to deal with this issue. But also, city council time in preparing for the, the agenda item for today's meeting.
Councilman, Councilman? I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to.
I've got the floor.
I know, I know, I just don't want to interrupt, but we had, we had the mayor, the mayor recused herself from last time.
Don't interrupt me. Don't interrupt me.
The mayor recused herself last time, but shouldn't she do that this time?
Gentlemen.
I would like, I would like, I would like the mayor or some communication back to the, to the applicant, expressing our displeasure for illegally constructing this item and ask staff to establish a, a time schedule for resolving their illegal construction.
I don't know that that's the mayor's job.
I also don't think that's appropriate this time.
I'm asking the staff.
Maybe they were looking for a council to see common sense on this one. It didn't look like council was going to do that, so they pulled it.
I, I, I'm not sure where common sense is on this when you know that, I think common sense is different for different people, unfortunately.
That's your truth. You're right.
Dold out equally. I, 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 let's, let's keep things calm first and foremost. Todd, does, with all respect, does Mayor Miles need to recuse herself, turn off her audio video, whatever the case may be? Zoom is weird. Sorry.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Pretending the information I've collected about the actual relationship, it does not amount to a conflict.
Okay, cool. I just want to get that on the record. With, with respect to this situation, there seems to be a bit of a pervasive trend. I don't know if it is in the last 10 years, the last 15 years, the last five years, but a bit of a trend that I'm seeing in a lot of projects around Villa Park, where people are constructing things, doing things, modifying things that either require a variance, a permit, or a conditional use permit. And then, oops, sorry, let me apply after the fact. I, I'm very concerned about that. I think that we need to take a bit of a sterner approach, candidly. We can't govern a city where people fluff the rules or don't educate themselves on the rules before they should do something. And, and using the term common sense, where, where things are arguably common sense, or at least it might raise the question where you, you contact the city and, hey, do I need to do something? I think anytime you construct a wall, logical questions need to be, need to be asked. So I'm just concerned about that moving forward. I appreciate Councilman Colacott's comments. I, I know myself, I've spent some time on this particular project and I saw it removed. And part of me is, well, thankfully, the homeowner is going to work with city staff and hopefully they, they remove the, the part that is not in compliance. Another part of me is maybe there's some sort of happy medium. But I, I guess, I think the trend that our city needs to go towards is we need to encourage people to educate themselves and apply for, whether it's a permit, a variance, or a CUP in advance, and not just expect, once it's built, to be approved. And, and I think that, that's something that we've seen in several projects and, and I think we're going to see that again in the future. So that's, those are, thank you.
Absolutely, Vince. I think those are good comments and I definitely agree with you. That is a concern and something we need to make sure that we look for ways to, to solve. I think in this case, they did look to the city for, for certain guidance on where the wall was placed, but the height of it, it ended up being just that much off, trying to make, keep it level on the property. I think we want to keep those things in line. I think we do want to make sure that people are getting the permits ahead of time and that they're asking for the right advice and getting it to make sure that they, they comply.
Yeah, and if the survey is needed, a survey is needed. If, if you have to hire an architect, hire an architect. I mean, candidly, we're all living in a community where we're all very, very blessed. And as such, there's responsibilities that are consistent with that. And if one cannot afford the proper professional expertise or one can't perform that expertise themselves, whether it's using YouTube or the public library or some other low-cost measure, then perhaps one shouldn't entertain those, those projects. But I appreciate the, the fact that it is a, a minor deviation, but it's a deviation nonetheless. So. But I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
I am glad to see that they didn't, they didn't proceed with any additional construction there.
Indeed.
And make matters worse, after we said something in the last council meeting.
If I can comment, I want to say, you know, thank you to, to Todd for clarifying, you know, that I did not, do not need to recuse myself. And Councilman Pitts, you know, trying to make sure that this group is up and up. And, and I appreciate him, you know, trying to flag down to say, you know, because I did recuse myself last time. So I, I appreciate the efforts on that, Councilman Pitts. And I hear everyone's comments. I think whenever we can have a city and a resident work together to come up with a resolution, that's a win-win for everyone. And so I, I, I kind of hope that we can continue recognizing that if the city and that homeowner can work together, that's a win for, for both them and for us. And that's what we want, is we want our residents to be happy. We want our, our city to be easy to work with and have a good rapport with our residents. Along the lines of what you were saying, Vince, if you remember, maybe not because I was really long-winded when I said it, but one of my goals was to make local government easier. And so I had, at the end of the meeting last month, you weren't there, I had asked or directed staff if they could put together kind of like a checklist, if you will, that everything from two, it could be flashy, it could be cute, it could be something that says like, thinking of building a wall or what things need a variance, just kind of this checklist that, that gets once a year emailed, mailed out to all the residents. Some may throw it away, some may look at it, throw it away, some may put it on their fridge. But that way it would start a, kind of a campaign to say, hey, look, if you want to build something, if you want to modify something, you probably need to come in and talk with us. And that's what this to-do list or this checklist, I'm calling it, would accomplish. And hopefully then, like you said, because I agree, it seems like there's a lot of people that are asking for forgiveness instead of permission. Well, if we didn't ever have anything like this in the past and some homeowners don't have common sense, we'll put it out there, right? Then expecting them to know to come in and do this, especially if they're young, new homeowners, they're not going to know to come in and ask the city. But if they get something in the mail and they see it, they just might later on say, hey, you know what? I remember seeing something like that. I should probably go and ask. So again, getting that conversation out there, opening up that dialogue. So Steve, I don't know how far along the city staff is in, in making that, but I know you have started. I don't, is this an appropriate time for you to kind of comment on it?
Sure. Mayor, thank you. It's, it's an idea. Unfortunately, the list is actually much longer than you think of what requires variances and CUPs, et cetera. It's not a short little mailer. It's a very, it's, so we're, we're going back through literally all of our building codes and planning codes and requirements. And it, it's a little more effort than, you know, it might be several pages, not just one. So there's no easy way to do it. The bottom line message, I think, that Councilman Rossini and yourself and all of you are saying is that if people want to build something, they need to check with the city. We're open, we're very available to talk to them. I know Bill's in the office only three days a week as a building and Ray's only three days. But both of them will respond at my request, emails, off-hours. So if somebody emails them on days they're not near, they're going to hear from them fairly quickly. The other thing, and I, I think that we, and Councilman Colacott has, has said this in the past, the city is very responsive when plans are submitted. We are a very easy city to deal with, and we hear that pretty regularly as far as people want to do some things. And it's not like you're going to deal with a, a huge, you can call the day before a, a building inspection, schedule one. That's not a very common situation. 30-day turnaround on plan checks, et cetera. So I think that's a, it's a great message that we ought to be sending out. But the actual checklist is, is probably going to be like a, a check manual, checklist manual. It's a little longer than, than what we think. So we're, we're doing that because we're making sure we can cite all the references. We don't want to put something out that we can't cite. So we're in process of it right now. We have two people working on it and I hope fairly soon. But it's, again, I want it thorough. I don't want to have big lists that somebody said, well, it wasn't on there. I didn't think I had to do it. That's not a good thing either.
Right. Thank you.
I think it's a great idea. My only concern would be, what's the cost on postage? Is this going to be mailed out? Is this obviously put out on city website? Where, where are we at on that?
So, Councilman, I think that there's a couple of things. One, we, we, we deal with a certain volume of, of, I mean, you believe it or not, most of our work is done by similar sets of architects and contractors throughout the city. So we're, we're not dealing with a whole limitless supply. I mean, a majority of our work is done by certain groups. We'll pass that out. We have flyers in the front of our office. And if you come in, you've seen that little island that has all those things.
Yeah.
We'll add that there and adding on our Facebook. Those are very limited costs to put those up there. And then we'll deal with the, the contractors and hand those out when building permits are issued, et cetera. And then if people come in, and then we'll also start, we, we can very easily, on the feeder and those types of things, send out the message, come see us if you're planning to build something. I think that's the message the mayor's trying to get to. Whether they actually have a checklist in their hand, may not be the best way to do it because it's so long. But an easy flyer that we can, or they can print out or something that's on there, we can easily put up and, and at very limited expense. So the, that's, from that perspective, it's, it's not a, not an expensive endeavor.
Perfect. I was just concerned about if we were trying, attempting to mail it out to all homeowners of record or something like that. I think that would be quite expensive considering what you're, you're talking about in, in the size of the document. But in the manner in which you're talking about distributing, I think it's a fantastic idea. Thank you.
Go ahead. I was just going to say real quick, if perhaps it just went to new residents as they came into the city, that would be a pretty limited run too, but that would get new residents to get familiar with procedures as they entered the.
I would just be. Uh, I would just be cautious about how much money we're spending on staff time and so forth to come up with a checklist. If there's something that we could do to create what we, we want, I thought we had some type of thing we put together three or four years ago that around the same problem that we had uh, with people doing this. And I think we put some type of advertisement or handout or something that we could, we could post and give to folks. But I'd be, I'd be really, I mean, you, you tying up a lot of staff time goes back to Bob's comment earlier about spending money on things we shouldn't be spending money on, maybe.
Any other comments?
Well, I think most uh, most contractors, electricians, plumbers, architects know, uh, anybody who uh, gets involved in any kind of a substantial project knows that they need to get permits. You know, masons know that as well. Um, perhaps the, you know, we should be looking at the more routine things like, do you know you're required to get a permit to replace your water heater or to replace a dishwasher? A lot of folks don't know that. Um, the big things like, you know, we've, we've had a couple of major uh, major issues where people of uh, residents have come in asking for forgiveness, knowing full well that they needed to get a permit. Uh, one was a major grading, grading project. Another was construction of a, a structure um, uh, without a permit. And the residents ended up spending uh, well over sixty thousand dollars to construct the structure and then had to apply for a demolition permit to take it down. Um, knowing full well that they required a permit before they embarked on those activities. So I don't think it's a matter of, you know, for the major projects, people not knowing that they need a permit, a lot of it, it's you know, hey, I'll skirt the issue and if I get caught, I'll ask for forgiveness. Uh, I think the best thing we can do as a city council is stick to our guns when we do see a major violation uh, and require uh, um, that the problem, that the violation be corrected. Uh, even if it means tearing the structure down because it's in violation.
Your points are well taken. Um, my intent originally with this task, you know, list um, um, was really more for those homeowners that don't have those big, huge jobs, like you're saying, and they aren't hiring, you know, contractors that you're right, know all these things. It's for the homeowners that try and do it themselves and more of the small jobs. But and, and so not only making local government um, easier for the resident, but also then putting the city in a position where if we have this information, it makes it um, uh, much more difficult for them to say, oh, I didn't know. Know what I mean? It puts our city in a position of, of leverage, saying, well, you know, you got this on the feeder, it was either in the mail, if you're a new resident, or something like that. So that's, that's where that came from. Um, but great discussion. Any other comments before we move on?
Mayor, I, I'd just like to add that, uh, to the, with respect, if you'll notice, the recommendation from staff was to deny that variance. Um, and so I want you to know, I mean, it isn't unnoticed, but these, the appellant has a right to come to the council. So they're gonna, they, many of them will pursue. And so ultimately, the decision is going to rest with the city council to make that finding and/or a policy decision, uh, I think. So I think that's sort of uh, one of the things that's key. I think Councilman Colacott has said, it's, it's sort of up to the council to, and to direct enforcement.
Well, I like that um, they're gonna try and work with the city and come up with um, a it's gonna be ca- um, amenable to everybody. Anything else? Okay, moving on. Um, our final or only hearing tonight is uh, variance number uh, twenty twenty-one dash zero two one eight seven one two Villa Woods Circle. I will now open the hearing staff. Please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a, this is located again, again at eighteen seven one two Villa Woods Circle. It's a single-story uh, I'm sorry, two-story, single-family residence and they have a attached three-car garage uh, the swimming pool on the spot. And I will let the uh, our planning manager, Ray Paspo, go ahead and uh, give you the details.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Specifically, uh, the variance request is a uh, permit to um, to do a, a garage extension within the front and side um, yard setback area. In the E-four zoning district, the minimum front yard setback is thirty feet. And the request is to permit a corner portion of the proposed garage extension to be twenty-one feet seven inches from the front property line as measured at its closest point for a deviation of five feet, or I'm sorry, eight feet, five inches. And the total area of encroachment within the front yard building setback area is uh, sixty point seven five, five square feet. The minimum side yard building setback uh, for this property is ten feet, two and a half inches. And the request is to permit the proposed garage extension to be nine feet, four inches from the side property line for a deviation of ten and a half inches. The total area of encroachment within the side yard building setback area is two point two five square feet. The property owners are proposing to remodel the interior of the first floor that includes expanding the living areas along the front of the residence and also adding a bedroom, full bathroom, and walk-in closet behind the existing three-car garage. There's a, the design which uh, extends the corner of the proposed garage into the front and side yard building setback area. Uh, as, as you have seen by reviewing the site plan for this project, the shape of the property is irregular. Um, the north property line runs parallel to Villa Woods Circle, beginning at the northwest corner of the property. And then it angles inward at the northeast corner of the property, which coincides with the beginning of the cul-de-sac or Villa Woods Circle. Uh, so at this point, the depth of the front yard becomes shallower, the width of the side yard area is narrower. And it creates a hardship um, and a challenge for the property owner to design this corner portion of the garage and be compliant with the um, the minimum setback requirements. As part of the variance application package, the project architect uh, included a plan as part of the package that shows two properties within the cul-de-sac of Villa Woods Circle, where the front portion of these residents uh, encroaches into the front yard setback area. City staff researched uh, city records for these properties, but was unable to find any uh, variance approvals that permitted these encroachments. Additionally, city staff found that there were two other properties within the same track within the same residential subdivision at the end of Villa Woods Drive, uh, where the residences uh, encroached into the front yard setback. Again, city staff did not find any um, approvals that allowed the front yard setback deviation. It is uh, presumed at this point that the reduced front yard setback for these residences and possibly others were originally approved and constructed as part of uh, the, the track um, in a manner to compensate for the, the odd shaped parcels. Uh, for this application, public hearing notices were mailed out to current property owners within three hundred feet of the uh, subject property at least ten days before this meeting. Um, the public hearing notices were also posted and um, published in the local newspaper. Um, as part of the variance application, the project architect included three letters of support uh, which are included in your staff report. And for the record, I'll read the uh, property owner's names and addresses at this time. Uh, Ron and Bonnie Johnson at one eighty-seven thirty-two Villa Woods Circle. Andy and Veronica Richardson at one eighty-seven eleven Villa Woods Circle. Walter and Leanne Lichinger at one eighty-six ninety-two Villa Woods Circle. Um, and then it was yesterday morning, uh, city staff received four additional letters of support from the following property owners. Frank and Sharon Koska at one eighty-seven fifty-two Villa Woods Circle. Greg and Sally Hall at one eighty-six ninety-one Villa Woods Circle. Bob and Jody Milne at ninety-seven twenty-two Villa Woods Drive. And Vince Conti at ninety-six eighty-two Villa Woods Drive. Uh, to date, staff has not received any additional comments for, against this uh, project for this item. And that's the, a brief overview of my staff report for this variance application. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Mayor, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Ray, um, did you have an opportunity to go out to this property uh, and physically view it from the street?
From the street, yes.
Okay. And did you note the structures on the side yard closest to the front? Um, that were, that are in violation?
For this property?
Yes.
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Um, did Mr. Tarrant go out to this site and view the property from his perspective before this matter was agendized?
I do not know that.
Okay, I didn't know if you got in that conversation in any way, shape, or form. Uh, I, what I'm getting at is, first of all, for the record, I, I tend to agree with, with the logic that staff has put together here. I, I do believe that particular parcel is odd-shaped. And if there is a parcel within that area that perhaps could uh, use a little bit of latitude and provide grounds for a variance, I think that parcel is appropriate for that. But my, what I have concerns about is when I go out to the, the, the site and I see two structures in plain view without, I mean, literally sitting in my car that are in violation of our code, well, two, perhaps, yeah, at least two. Um, this, I don't believe should even be on our agenda until those are remedied. Um, so I would encourage in the future that if we have any more applications for a variance or a CUP or a permit, um, perhaps a little closer attention to detail and absolutely involvement with Mr. Tarrant on this. And if that means extra time, uh, money put into the budget related to uh, building and safety and planning, I'm all for it because this should never have been agendized when I, from my car, see that. Uh, I appreciate the fact that staff did point out some other issues on another property nearby. I think those need to be addressed in a similar vein. Uh, I think that uh, far too long, we have kinda turned it a different eye and we've used the excuse, well, we don't look over fences. Well, in many of these cases, we don't have to look over fences. They're in plain view. They, they're, they're obvious. And we shouldn't rely upon um, one homeowner having to turn in another homeowner. There are a certain set of minimum standards that we have to have in this community, that we should have in this community. I appreciate the fact that we approve projects, we take the spirit of the law, not necessarily the letter of the law. I'm not advocating in any way, shape, or form, having lived in an HOA, to have anything like that. In fact, quite the contrary. I don't want a design review board. I don't want anything like that. But I believe in, in all candor. I appreciate the work that you and, and, and Bill have done. But in this situation and a few others, we've fallen below the bar. Uh, for this particular matter, I'm not inclined to vote on it. I would request that it be continued until next month, until the homeowner has provided photos of what is back there and how they intend to come in compliance with the code. Thank you.
Um, I've got a question. Uh, Councilman Racini, you mentioned you observed a couple of um, auxiliary structures. Roughly, how big were these auxiliary structures that?
Uh, to the best of my naked eye, I wanna say maybe an eight-by-eight uh, shed. And then another ten-by-ten uh, flat roof structure that uh, pokes over the fence. Um, again, I did not get out of my car. I'd, uh, I'm not frankly very tall, so I, I I, I perhaps can't see as well as, as some others. But they're pretty obvious to the naked eye when you drive in the cul-de-sac and you look at the adjacent properties, as we all should, um, that there's something there that frankly shouldn't be there. They're literally right against the property line. Uh, they're into that, um, uh, they're, they're encroaching into the setback. And um, to the best of my knowledge, they don't have any approval to do so. So, um, Uh, there's that too, but I wasn't even gonna get into that. That's a whole other can of worms. But that also is an issue. And again, that issue is in plain sight. So we have three structures, three in plain sight, two of which are on our applicant's own property that were not brought to our attention and have no remediation. In fact, the set of plans that I reviewed multiple times make no mention of it. None, zero. I have an issue with that, a huge issue with that. How many other projects are, are, are sliding through? Uh, I, I just, again, nine times out of ten, Bill, Ray, you guys do great work. Uh, staff does a great job, but you know, I think we need to be very careful about this because down the road uh, somebody might uh, really have an issue with this. And then we're gonna look terrible. We're gonna look terrible as a group and as a city. So that's all I have. Thank you.
We have the homeowners on that we can ask them what the structures are?
Yes, we can get them on the line.
Yeah, and uh, while I, I'd like to know what the structures are, how large they are, uh, do they require permits? Is there, for example, is there like provided to those uh, structures? Um, you know, I've personally, I'm, if they're asking for a variance or a permit from the city and they have illegal structures on their property, I think we should uh, you know, put a hold on that and say, okay, let's, you know, get your property in order, uh, get it into compliance. And then we'll consider your permit application or your variance application. But to be in, you know, if they are in violation, that's.
Well, I think that's the key too, is are we sure that they're in violation and it was their violation that they, you know? I mean, what if it was there prior to them even being there?
It was there before. But so, if it's not a legal structure, they own it.
So what about, uh, and I hear what everyone's saying, um, but you know, don't, don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to offer some discussion and dialogue here. Why couldn't we um, identify what the variance is asking for right now, which is dealing with this setback for this reconstruction and this um, garage and um, expanding on this garage with the caveat that they must fix, identify something addressed with these other structures that are on their property. But um, you know, we don't know anything about those two structures. So why not treat them separately?
Well, I, I suggest that, uh, I suggest that we um, that we continue this item. Give them the opportunity to come back to this council with, you know, a clear identification of what those auxiliary structures are uh, and a review by our building um, uh, building official as uh, any violations of the, of building requirements uh, seen in those uh, auxiliary structures. And also um, a, a reading from our uh, planning manager. Uh, if they're located, are they located within an easement? Is that, you know, do they need some kind of variance for that? Or is the, you know, that's uh, we can't neglect that as well. I mean, our, our, we rely on our planning manager to make sure properly developing their property and not, not encroaching into uh, setbacks or easements.
So Mayor, the, the, the new face of the evening is the homeowner.
Planning manager, uh, if they're located, are they located within an easement? Is that, you know?
How come I'm hearing Councilman Colacott?
Alyssa, Alyssa, what's going on?
Oh, does she have the TV on?
Oh, yeah. Can you please turn your uh,
Not encroaching into uh, set.
There you go.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us. Um, some of our members of our council have some questions um, regarding some of the structures that are on your property.
Okay. Uh, I've been listening in and I actually, I'm not sure what structures they're talking about. The only additional, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead, please.
Oh, the only additional structure um, that I can think of is a a, a plastic Home Depot shed, like that's not even four feet long, I think. That's the only. not even four feet long, I think. That's the only thing that's on the side. I don't, I don't really know what they're talking about.
Council, do you have any questions for the homeowner?
Um, I will be happy to send a photo of that to um, City Manager, um, Franks here. Just give me a minute, uh, but I have no questions at this time.
Councilman McCollough, do you have any questions?
Yeah, if there are um, any auxiliary structures on the property, they should be identified on the plan submitted in request for the per variance. And if any permits are required, there there should be identified, you know, to our building manager, building official so that uh, he can see, you know, that um, the uh, the buildings have been properly uh structured, uh, constructed and uh uh permitted.
How long have you lived there?
We've been here about eight years.
Okay, and when you moved in, were there any structures in the backyard that were there prior to you moving in?
Separate from our home. No, not that I can think of.
Okay, and um, have you built anything on the property?
No.
Okay.
So the four by four shed that that you referenced or the the small shed, that's something that you guys got from Home Depot and set up?
Yeah, it's like a plastic little garden shed.
There's another, there's another rather flat roof structure immediately to the right if you're at the street. Um, that should be shown in the photos that were both emailed and texted to our city manager. Um, I I think that's, this is one of the reasons why I'm asking that we continue this matter until we actually can see what that is, because it's it's fairly clear from the street that there are um, something that is not your roof line, that is beneath your roof but above the wall and it's immediately adjacent to the shed in question. So I I I don't have so much of an issue with the shed if it can be moved, but I do have an issue if there is something beside it and the plans that your architect submitted make no mention in any way, shape or form. In fact, they say something quite, quite different. They say uh, existing turf area to remain and and I quote, they they make no mention of a shed or anything else there. I've heard uh someone suggest that perhaps it's it's playground equipment. And if that's the case, then great. I I frankly obviously don't have an issue with something like that as long as it's compliance in compliance with the code. But the plans themselves say existing turf area with no call out for the structures in question.
Is it, are, is it close to the fence?
Yes, exactly.
Are you sure that was our property? We don't have any, it wasn't. Flat structure. We really don't. I
Okay.
I, well, we're here. I I don't have a flat structure near the fence.
I I appreciate that. It's the other side of the block wall and correct me if I'm wrong, the block wall separates your property and the other home.
There's a picture right there.
That is not my home. I'm sorry, that's not my home.
Okay.
That's a, that's across the street.
Great.
Okay.
Is that what you're referring to, Councilman Rossini, that that?
There is a, so this structure here, okay. So there is that little shed, that shed is not your shed?
That is not my home. That's across the street, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then I've got nothing further.
Perfect.
Well, I guess I have a uh question if um, if it's across the street. Um, what is uh city staff going to do to look into that?
Well, uh, Councilman McCollough, let's discuss that after we're done with this item. Um, you know, because Mrs. Kim is, um, you know, obliging us with her time right now.
Yeah, we have the architect on now as well.
Hello, this is Jeff Benson. Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Hi, it's good. Thank you very much for joining us. Council, do you have any questions of the architect?
I I just would like some additional time to review this application and continue the matter till next, till next month.
There's um, there's also a uh, a s- something behind the garage. I'm, it's not clear what that is. Um, it's like a, some kind of a roof.
Could I ask?
I think that picture is is not of her house, is what she's saying.
I think you guys are looking at the wrong.
This is the aerial photo that's in the uh Exhibit C. Right below the uh, where it provides the address.
Mayor, may I ask a question of staff?
Absolutely.
Also, you know, is something behind the garage. I'm not sure what that is. Um.
Esther, would you mind muting that? Uh, Ray, your recommendation on the.
Picture is is not of her house.
Sorry, Ray, can you hear me?
Yeah, I could hear you.
Thanks. Your recommendation on this is to approve?
Approved, yeah, the variance.
And that's based on the factors you mentioned about the uh hardship on the the shape of the property?
That's correct.
And do you review other um violations or any problems with the site as you're going out there?
Um, yeah, the obvious ones. I mean, if there, if there is something about um the property that looks peculiar and doesn't look like it belonged there, then yeah, we would, we would call it out. We also as city staff, we rely on the the architect or the general contractor that we're working on to be um as complete with the plans when they're submitted so that we have a a really good picture and story of what we're dealing with.
And you didn't find any problems and there weren't any discrepancy between the plans and what was seen on site?
Not at all.
Great.
Ray, what uh, what is um, on Exhibit C? Which was providing our uh agenda package. There's an aerial, Exhibit C is an aerial map of the property which is outlined in yellow.
That's correct.
And the property in question is one-eight-seven-one-two Villa Woods Circle, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, there's on the backside of the garage, there is something and you can see that there's a shadow on off to the right. It appears that it's some kind of a structure. What is that?
No, that's the um, if that picked it up, it's a it's a chest, it let to hold uh barbecue equipment. It's literally, it's not even, it's like.
It it's not permanently affixed to the ground is what you're saying?
No.
It's moved, okay, right. Well, I I'm satisfied with what you're stating and um my, my concerns are alleviated by what you're saying. I think we have some issues that we need to clean up internally. And I thank you for coming on and thank you for your time.
Does anyone else have any other questions of Mrs. Kim?
Well, um, overall, I'd like to compliment the uh, the residents on looking to improve their property. I've uh, it appears like it's gonna uh be in an enhancement to our city. Uh, and I um, uh, welcome your uh willingness to enhance the city and to make a further investment in our city.
Excuse me, may I comment? This is Jeff Benson, the architect.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, uh, in response to the question about the Exhibit C, the portion of roof that is showing behind the garage, which is directly below the Google Maps red indicator that has the address, which has the corresponding shadow to the right, that that's a portion of the s- the main structure's roof that um, you can barely see a valley that starts at the bottom corner where that shadow is and transcends up at a diagonal up towards the base of that red pin. Um, that's a, an existing portion of the structure. I don't, I don't understand that that's a, an issue and and again, that's within the um, within the buildable area of the lot. So I I'm a little bit confused as to why that's um, such a hot topic. And I apologize, but when I was given the passcode and the meeting ID to log on, I did miss a good portion of the discussion.
Absolutely. Let me explain a little bit. I think that there was some um misunderstanding on which picture, um, uh, which home was actually we were discussing. And so I think uh, Mrs. Kim clarified that the concerns that were brought about by some of the council members um were not uh her home, so.
Okay, okay.
I mean, in the middle, so um, we appreciate both you, Mrs. Kim and and Mr. Benson uh for coming on and giving us your time and um, apologize if there was any misunderstanding or or confusion. So Council, if we're okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and let them go.
Yeah, a- and again, it's not the logic of staff. It's, there was some concerns with the application itself, but apparently that's not the case, but there are numerous other issues that need to be dealt with with planning and with, more importantly, I think, code enforcement moving forward.
But not with her property.
No, and and candidly, with how these come to council and whether or not we have the information required to make the best decision. But I will be happy to weigh in with staff on that tomorrow.
Perfect, okay.
Can I add one more thing? Just to to say thank you to the resident. I I also, I always appreciate when we get letters from neighbors and all of the positive reinforcement for your project is, I think, weighs heavily for me. That's a fantastic addition to this proposal, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, uh, any other comments or uh discussion on this matter?
Nope.
I, Mrs. Kim, you can go ahead and and uh leave. Thank you. Mr. Benson, thank you for your time.
You.
Okay, uh, is there a motion?
Was there already a motion to to postpone or? Okay, I'd like to motion to approve the proposal.
All second. Uh, Steve, can you please call the roll?
Councilman McCollough?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. What was that?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Okay, passes five zero.
Hey Mayor, if if I may just say something since we're all here and it was brought up. So the issue of of looking for other code enforcement issues in relation to a pending permit, there are certain property rights issues at stake that are dependent upon whatever permit is applied for, right? So if there's a variance, there are certain things we look for as as outlined under state law, which are outlined in the staff report. Uh, if you start going outside the exact parameters of what land use permit is involved, it tends to be uh on shakier legal ground because there is not that direct connection, i.e. that nexus and legal jargon between uh the issues raised and the uh actual permit that people are applying for, right? Because permits are part of your land use rights to be able to apply for. So I've been in, I've had to deal with this in a number of situations because, well, once again, not to throw around the word commonsensical, but it does seem anomalous that one could have pending violations yet get an approval for a different type of permit. Um, but it is a bit of a slippery path when you go down that road of making sure someone's clean before they get any other accommodation from the county. I remember a number of years ago, Signal Hill, I believe it was, required that before you sold your property, you had to get an inspection from the city stating that there were no code enforcement violations on the property and that everything was according to code before being allowed to sell. Um, I've also had to deal with the issue in Irvine in certain circumstances as to city ordinances not allowing uh anybody to apply for a certain type of permit if it hadn't paid all the costs for previous permits applied for. So I just raised that issue because it was raised in the context of this hearing. Definitely the issue of um, the city attempting to enforce and if possible remediate any outstanding code violations um, is a policy decision. Um, before we we outlined a policy or a law or a path that required that they all be remediated prior to or in connection with the permit application is a at times rockier road. And uh, we would need to agendize that and think about that before we um chose that as a mantra, so I just for your information, provide that.
I I think that's a a a great legal discussion, Todd, and I thank you for that. I think that given the frequency and flagrant nature of how many violations in this one cul-de-sac area, I think it would probably be a good idea for us to agendize that in the future because uh it's fairly obvious that um quite a few things have slipped between the cracks. So good, good suggestion though, thank you.
No, I get the vibe and I understand. Um, it's just how we address those those cracks which uh procedurally may be important. That's all, yep.
Absolutely.
I'd like to comment on that, that I I I appreciate what I, what you're saying, Councilman Rossini, um, and I get the idea and the intent behind it, but I also want to be careful. I don't, I don't want us to be known as the Gestapo, you know what I mean? And um.
No, not at all.
So, uh, although I agree, everyone needs to play by the rules, um, I think um, it's a, it's a slippery slope and a discussion definitely with, you know, I think we could have a nice discussion about it at another time as well.
I I don't ever want to be um used or equated to the word Gestapo in any way, shape or form in the actions that I or that my name is associated with, so I I appreciate that. I thought I made my point very clear. Um, this is not an HOA, this is not a design review board. But I a- a- and though I understand that you're not equating me personally to that, but um, choice of words maybe. Um, I I just think that it's important that, especially given the fact that our city is over fifty years old, um, that we are running into these issues where it's fairly obvious that we have turned a blind eye to quite a few things and I'm not looking to go around and and uh checking everybody's backyard and and in their cupboards. But if things are obvious and in plain view, uh, a- and are potentially hazardous, we have um, a governor and a state legislature that wants to build uh, basically mega mansions on lots with no side yards. And that is forcing us into a different direction. And potentially, we're gonna run into having quite a few uh more structures. And I want to make sure that all of the structures that are built from here on out of any significant size that are not movable by hand, that are not portable, uh, are done so appropriately and with proper permits and that we are keep, we are minding the store. Let's put it that way.
Really good point, Vince. If I can just add on very briefly, I think it also causes some confusion for our residents. I know in the previous variants, I said, I I think I mentioned last month, I walked around the city and I saw house after house after house, my daughter and my wife were with us, where we walked over and we looked at the pilasters and we did it and we saw them on an overwhelming number where they were taller than what they were supposed to be. They were co- all over the place in Villa Park and it 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 made me wonder, I actually did reach out to uh, Bill to ask him about how many he thought might be grandfathered in or if there was some uh, if they'd all gotten variances, but it's hard for a resident to know when they look around and they see this all over the place that what they're doing is wrong. They think, oh, well, everybody else is doing it. I can do it too. And it it makes that situation. I think if you can go onto a street um, and see violations all over, it does start to raise issues and then the the residents are confused too, so I I think it's a really good point, Vince.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to consent calendar. Uh, we have.
We, uh, about a ten minute break.
Uh, uh, just that we have a ten minute break. I think we're but.
Need a ten minute break.
Council, would you like a break? I wanna, I don't wanna.
Sure.
Great, okay, then let's do a ten minute break and we will resume at eight thirty. Okay, so if we're ready, I'll go ahead and resume. Um, thank you for all coming back. We're on the consent calendar now. Um, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion and separate and or separate action. Uh, Council, do you have any items that you would like hold?
Item eleven, please.
Yeah, me too.
Yep, me too. All right, so I have, uh,
Item 10 as well.
Okay, item 10 and 11. Okay, I have items 10 and 11 pulled from the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the balance? Which was five through, five through nine.
Second.
Okay, Steve, can you call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles? Pass is five zero.
Thank you. Okay, now we will take up the items that were pulled. And the first one in order of chronological, numerical order. Item number 10, the Contract Award Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Slurry Seal Project that was pulled by Councilman Colacott.
Okay, I'm pleased to see that we've, we're addressing some of these streets that have gotten a little bit shabby over the years, such as Adams Ranch Road and Adam Circle. But I, I want to report a, something that happened to me shortly after our last council meeting. On a Sunday morning, following the January council meeting, a 49-year resident off of, that lives on Dodson came knocking on my door. And this was, this is my seventh year being on city council and this is the first time that this has ever happened, that a resident's actually come knocking on my door upset about something. The resident was pretty agitated for good reason. For almost 50 years, the resident has been lobbying our city staff and council to get Dodson properly repaired and maintained. He noted that the streets in front of my house and Mayor Miles' house were just repaved. The street in front of Councilman Rossini's house was recently repaved. The street, the street in front of Councilman Zimmerman's house is scheduled for a slurry seal in this agenda item. And council, I believe the streets in Councilman Pitts' area were maintained relatively recently, just a few, since I've been on council and are in excellent shape. Anyway, the, the resident posed a reasonable question. Do I have to get elected to council to get my street repaired? I've been after it for 50 years. Anyway, we have some other streets that could use some attention. Couple of cases in point between, besides Dodson, there's also Potter Circle. In addition to approving this, I'd like to encourage the council and our city manager to see if there's any way we can get some more money to take care of these remaining streets so that all residents in Villa Park have good-looking streets in front of their homes.
Mayor, if I could take a moment?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I think the councilman raises a good point. There are a lot of streets that need it. You'll note the project we are, we just finished. There are some significant improvements in the streets that we have. The, we go by a listing that we use, the PCI, Payment Condition Index. The, and we do that. So, we have a project every two years, we try and get done, as you'll note, every two years. And in that interim year, we identify the streets and whatnot. So, we are already planning for the next set of streets to move forward and we've dedicated several million dollars over the last years to do this. A lot of it's to catch up, like Councilman Colacott says. There's a lot of work to do, but I think he raises a good point. And I think our focus is to continue moving forward in a very aggressive manner to address those rest of the streets. However, instead of addressing them piecemeal, it's more efficient for us to do larger projects at one time. So, this, the Slurry Seal Project itself is the brainchild of Councilman Colacott, who indicated some time ago, several years back, that this would be a good project, a good way to go to help us improve a lot of those streets that need to be approved, that don't need full pavement grinding and whatnot. So, we are in the process of already begun identifying our next set of streets for our next project. And to the extent that, I think if you, you pose those questions, there are a lot of people that would say their street needs it. We try and operate on as most objective index as we can with our PCI. But I, I certainly do respect the, the concerns of residents saying that their streets need repair. So, we certainly want to do our very best to accommodate all the needs. I would love to have the money to do every street all at once, but we don't have that money. And I think we'd hear a lot of complaints if we did. So, I think our focus is to try and move forward in a logical and progressive manner and also within our budget constraints. So, we dedicate and we collect our gas tax monies and, and then put it all toward a major project. As you recall, this project this year is $1.8 million that we're putting aside and then another $100,000 plus we're putting aside for the slurry seal. So, close to $2 million is going toward this effort. We've finished a lot of it and now we're doing the slurry seal. But you, very soon, you'll be seeing a budget element for next year and then that will include our next project. So, I think Councilman Colacott, your point is well taken. And I think the effort is every bit there to move forward and to try and address all those problem streets that you identified.
Okay, well, there are four other doors that this gentleman could have pounded on. He knew where I was, so he pounded on mine. But I don't believe he's the only resident that's raised an eyebrow about, okay, it looks like all the councilman's streets are being taken care of, what about mine? So, let's see what we can do to really take care of these streets and so that all of our residents can be satisfied with what's in front of their house.
I, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I have personally raised Dodson Way for the very same reasons that Mr. Wolf is concerned. Ms. Buxton has raised concerns, several other neighbors, top of the cul-de-sac, have uttered concerns about the condition of Dodson Way. I, I noticed Akram was on, do we have an idea if Dodson Way is projected in the next year's resurfacing? Because it's, it's a long street and frankly, it's in really bad condition. So, I was hoping that it was kind of at the top of the list there.
Okay, yeah, right now, we're still looking at the, all the streets that we're gonna be recommending for the next street project. We will be looking at, at the, as the city manager mentioned, at the PCI. Also, we walk the streets, we look at the, also the, if there is any utilities work is to be done any on those streets. So, we'll kind of coordinate if there is any utilities projects with the street improvement. So, this way, we won't pave the street and then come and the utilities companies comes and dig it up. So, all these, we take that in consideration. And then, for sure, is the amount of the budget that is
Of course.
being approved, you know. So, I don't have an answer for you, you know, at this moment, when Dodson is gonna be done. But we'll, we'll look into it and make sure that, see where does it fit in and if it is need to be done, you know, with next year or not.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, you know, I'd like to add that I did not, and I'm sure staff will confirm this, but I did not ask any of our staff to pave Feather Hill or to do anything with Feather Hill. Just as I'm sure that none of the other councilmen asked that their streets be addressed. But it, five, for the five streets being addressed and that we all in front of councilmen's houses does kind of ra, you know, raise question. And I think we owe it to our residents to do what we can to make sure that everybody's taken care of.
As somebody who's very familiar with this project, I, I hope that you reassure them that absolutely had nothing to do with us being councilmen and it is entirely based on a PCI scale for each of those streets, that absolutely none of us would ever request something like that. In fact, we all recuse ourselves and in many cases would say, please don't. But I, I think absolutely, I'm not a big fan of the squeaky wheel getting increased. I think it's important to make sure when we see something, we make sure it's identified. But we can't really put somebody at the top of the list just because they're complaining a lot. And we certainly can't put them on because they're a councilman. That's a, that would never work as a system, so.
This gentleman's been complaining for almost 50 years and, you know, I mean, if, if our resident and I saw that all the streets in front of all the councilmen's residences were being taken care of, yours is, Chad is scheduled in this current agenda item.
Right, you should definitely explain that that, that's not a correlation, that's a coincidence. That's not a
But still, still, you know, you, it raises the question and the appearance is there.
If I, thank you both for your comments, want to, since we're all talking about our streets. The entire length of Santiago Boulevard was repaved due to the gas line that was dug up the entire length. So, that actually covers a lot of people, not just my corner. But nonetheless, as Mayor Protem Zimmerman said, you know, there is no, nobody here has asked for anybody's street to be paved. But I will say that, you know, Council, we are the ones that approve the paving projects. So, if in the future, we see a street that's not on there, we don't have to approve the project. So, let's keep that in mind too, we're deflecting on staff. But it is us, the final say is with us on what we approve. So, let's keep that in mind, please, as well. That's kind of my point.
And Mayor, if I may? I think, I think we chose, I think we chose the PCI so that it was a fair way for all streets to be assessed and, and fixed w- within the budget guidelines that we set. So, I think for us to deter and go in other directions at this point in time would be not a good idea. I think we've, I think we've all agreed at some point in time that it's a fair process. And I re- recognize that we have, you know, we, we have complaints all the time about varied things in the city. But if we vary from the things that make it fair for everyone, then we set ourselves up for future problems like preference, preferential treatment and things like that, so.
A- absolutely, I agree. And I think PCI is an issue with that street. And also, I mean, if, if you're familiar with that street, there are numerous skin caps or whatever the, the phrase is, numerous areas where there has been significant settlement in the street and it looks like the back of, of an alligator and that base failure, I believe, is the term. And that is typically an indication of the street failing, so. But again, I think it is important that there is not a political answer to this issue. It's a professional issue and the engineer, I, I believe that PCI is, is a big part of that equation. But as Akram mentioned, it's, it's staff going out there and visually inspecting and taking consideration utilities and other issues that, that might come to play. But not a political solution, but a, a, an engineering solution to it. I mean, obviously, we can echo the sentiments of residents, I think that's our job. But in the end, to keep the politics out of the situation. But I, I appreciate everybody's comments.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
Mayor, if I may, from the legal side of it and the argument as to people's streets being repaired in front of their houses. Under the Political Reform Act, slurry seal slash repair type projects are not deemed a, an improvement to one's real property. Building a new street or adding lanes or stuff like that is, and then you have to legally recuse yourself. But slurry seal, there's a FBPC opinion on this point where you don't have to technically recuse yourself. Just so people watching out there understand that we are in compliance with the law. Of course, people are always free if they think from the appearance that they can recuse themselves if they so wish, but they're not legally required to, that's all.
Thank you.
It's a good point that I didn't notice. So, I, I didn't need to recuse myself on this one particular item since my street is on this.
Correct, my understanding from Akram, it's a slurry seal repair project, right?
Uh, that it is, it's really more of a, kind of like, slurry is considered as maintenance more than a street rehabilitation project.
Right.
Thank you.
Move, we approve this and move forward, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Steve, can you take the roll, please?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Protem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes. Pass, please. Go ahead. Report, passes five oh?
Five oh, sorry, yes, sorry.
Okay, thank you. The next item that was pulled is consent item number 11, Amendment to Master Parking and Traffic Resolution Regarding Parking Restrictions on Santiago Boulevard. That was pulled by Councilman Rossini, Councilman Pitts and myself. So, either one of you, if you'd like to, to start, I'm, you know, go ahead.
I, I would just like to hear more from staff about this and if they're, what kind of notification, besides the residents obviously involved in this, I, I've read the staff report on it. You know, have we sent out a mailer to 300, you know, to all residents within 300 feet or 500 feet or whatever the magic number is? Just notifying other people that this might affect. You know, I, I appreciate the, the residents' concerns and, and I'm very familiar with that street. I almost bought a house on that street. So, I appreciate their concerns, but I, I'd like to hear staff talk about that a little bit and what kind of precedent we have on this.
Councilman Pitts, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, yes, please, if you don't mind, Mayor. The reason I asked for it to be pulled for consideration and discussion is not necessarily for what the residents brought up, but I also want us to be mindful of any further parking restrictions that we impose in Villa Park as it relates to the housing plan that's coming up in the future for, for vote and things like that and how this, you know, parking i- is, is, we've got to consider all of that when we, when we go through that, that housing element reprocess. So, I just bring that up as a caution. So, we take a look at it and, and make sure we're not making decisions that could have later impact as it relates to that, the housing element.
Thank you. Akram, can you respond to those?
In reference to the first concerns, there was no flyers were sent to the residents within the 300 feet. We've sent the, as I mentioned in the report, we've met with Mr. and Mrs. Cabara and some of the residents on the street. And also, after the report was done, we sent it to Mrs. Cabara to, to make sure that she informed the, the residents that they have concerns with the situation. It is mainly this, the no parking, it's due to the site, to the visibility and the site distance. So, we're not going and trying to prohibit parking just for the sake of, you know, to please the residents, but mainly is to improve the site distance when the drivers coming out from Old Lamp Ladder. And a matter of fact, when we calculated, we've, we calculated based on the vehicles stopping at the stop line and then moving forward to a point where it is safe to move forward. And then from, from that point, that's where we calculated the site distance. And, and with that, we did believe that by prohibiting 40 feet on one side, on the east side of the intersection and 20 feet on the other side, on the west side of the intersection, will improve tremendously the line of sight. And this way, it's to prevent any possible a miss accidents or any accidents occurring at that location. Even though we've, there is no reported accidents at the intersection between Santiago and Old Lamp Ladder. So, that's, that's what the staff recommending is to prohibit those distances on both sides of the intersection.
Thank you, I have some comments, go ahead.
Is this street unique? Why this street and not others? Is this, why are we imposing it here for site? Do we have similar situations in Villa Park where other streets are in similar situations?
There are, I mean, we try to, the ones which where the side distance is really, there is concerns. There is a, a vertical curve on Santiago. And Santiago, Santiago, since it's a collector's street and the, the speed is a little bit higher than the normal residential streets. And that's why we've, we looked at it very carefully to make sure that you know, if we prohibit some parking at the intersection only, not on the, the whole street, only just a, at the intersection, is, would it improve the line of sight to prevent any possible accidents?
But again, there's line of sight, do we have line of sight issues with other streets the same way?
Well, there are some, I mean, if you look at the Santiago, there are several intersections are being red curved. So, yes, that, and that were red curved at the different dates, you know. So yes, that, and that were red curved at the different dates, you know, long time. And that's, some of it is due to the line of sight or, and also due to, you know, because of close to the school and during the support activities, a lot of the kids and parents park on that street, which is hinder the line of sight at the intersections.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no problem. So I, I can appreciate safety. That is my street. Actually, I live several houses away from that intersection. And speeding on that street is a huge issue. So I can appreciate that the resident is interested in making sure that anyone exiting Old Lamp lighter is doing so in a safe manner. However, I will say, since I do live on that street, I make that pass by at least a minimum five to six times daily. And there is only ever one car I see that is parked in the area that would be and I have, I think maybe a long time ago, there was some construction somewhere. So there were some cars there. But I guess my, my concern is, Akram, did you say that flyers or notifications were not sent out to the surrounding neighbors?
That is correct. We did not send any flyers. We just, you know, the people that we've met with from the residents and also Mr. and Mrs. Kabara, which lives in the cul-de-sac of Old Lamp lighter.
Is there any? So here's the other thing, too. I can look at it both ways, right? Because nobody ever parks there, literally nobody ever parks there except for one individual. And I believe it's the gentleman that lives on the corner of Old Lamp lighter, who's on the west corner. It really would only impact him because I think it's his son that parks there. So on the flip side, if we paint it red and nobody parks there anyways, then it's just a red curb. But I guess my concern is I'd like to make sure that everybody in the area is notified and aware of this is going on. So I don't know if I can, me personally request, or if I should recuse myself, Todd, this is for you because I do live on that street. But I, I would like to have the rest of the residents notified that this is something that's being put on the agenda. So Todd, do I need to recuse myself since I'm literally three houses away?
Similarly, there are, there is an exception for parking restrictions on one street. I think we dealt with Feather, Bob Street, a number of years ago, there was some issue about parking restrictions. And we actually got an opinion from the FPPC on that issue. So I was just trying to pull up the exact code so I could cite it. But since I haven't found it yet, maybe it would be safer for you at this point in time to recuse yourself, at least until I find the code section. I apologize for that.
No problem. I will do so. Mayor Protem Zimmerman, would you mind continuing?
Sure.
Mayor Protem, if I could just point out, on attachment one, ironically, the picture, the Google picture, there's a car parked right in the red zone.
Is that a pickup truck?
Yeah, I think it's a pickup, good eyes, but I, it's, a car is parked there, just ironically. I just wanted to point that out, that there are cars occasionally parked there. Whether that deters.
It's the homeowner in the corner. It's the homeowner in the corner.
Yes, sir.
That is correct. It is the, the kid of the homeowner at that corner.
Yeah.
And really, it's, it's just a matter of pushing him another 40 feet from the intersection.
Can I have, I'm going to ask a couple of questions real quick on this while we're still in questions of staff. So were there any other alternatives other than red curbing this that were looked at, maybe a stop sign there or anything else that was, that was proposed?
There is a stop sign on the side street.
On Santiago?
On Santiago really does not qualify or warrants to put in a stop sign on the Santiago because it's a minor street and it's only serving, I think, 18 feet, 18 homes. So it's not really a, does not come out with that much traffic.
Thank you. I wasn't proposing it. I was just asking if it had been explored and wanted to make sure that it had been, if there were any other options that I was just off the top of my head. Is that, is that one or are there any others that were discussed as alternatives?
It seems to me that homeowner on the corner's bush causes more problem than a single car parked out there from a facility perspective when you pull up to the, to the stoplight, I mean, to the stop sign.
It's, we have a, I mean, if you like, I have a PowerPoint and we'll have Alyssa put it on and we'll show you how we calculate that. And it shows where's the line of sight and how we've come up with those distances.
Akram, I trust you. I, I trust you've done your diligence, okay?
All right. There's no need to, to put it on.
No need, Alyssa.
My only other question on this was if, it sounds like that there is all upside to, to removing cars there. Was there any other, was there any downside looked at in terms of impact? And I think this is where Mayor Miles referenced, impact to a resident who's parking there on a continual basis. Was there anything else that was identified as a possible downside to red curbing there?
Not really. There is no downside because there's, as it was mentioned, really hardly any parking on Santiago itself. And the driveway, the next house on Santiago, the driveway is far away, is still, there is another, I think it's about a, close to another 100 feet. So this way, even if that neighbor, which is fronting and has its own driveways on Santiago, still have enough parking and so on. So it does not impact any parking or any future you know, adding units within the, those homes that does not prohibit any parking for them, you know, or minimize their parking places.
Steve, do you think this will set precedence or cause any issues with the housing element later on down the road? Because we've started to restrict parking in the city now in certain places?
Councilman, I think this is justifiable in that it's a, it's different than the residential areas like Akram and collectors, I think you referred to it, Akram. So it is not necessarily a resident, pure residential area. So an extensive expansion of this kind of activity throughout the city would be problematic. I think, especially if we move more into the residential. But as you drive down Santiago, you'll see several of the adjacent streets have red curb just like that. So it's not unprecedented along that route. So I, I'm not sure that that presents a problem. Overall, any further expansion may, but I, I, your point's well taken.
Council members, are there any other questions?
I have a question of Todd. Todd, is there an obligation under the housing element, the ADU ordinance that was mandated by the state for cities to provide overnight on-street parking?
It's sort of a converse. It limits the city's ability to require any additional onsite parking because of an ADU.
But we're not obligated to provide on-street parking?
No.
Okay.
Steve, is there anyone that wrote in from the public that would like to comment on this item?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council members, is there any other discussion regarding this item?
I'd like to make one clarification. In the, the report is correct. There is a typing errors in the resolution. It got switched between the east and west. So the first item, which is Santiago Boulevard South side from the AC with Old Lamp lighter in, should be in the east direction for a distance of 40 feet. And the second one, it should be changed in the west direction of the, for a distance of 20 feet, which is exactly to be matching with the report itself and the, and the exhibit. All right.
Thank you for the clarification. Council members, is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. I'll now close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this matter?
I'd move the staff recommendation with the amendment proposed by Akram.
Could you, Steve, could you call for the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Passes four zero with Council, with Mayor Miles recusing.
Thank you. Can we call her back? Text her?
Oh, she's back. That was quick. Yeah, and just so the record, because I, I mentioned it, I apologize. It's FPPC Reg 18703 E3. And it talks about being exempt from the real property conflict rules. Changes to that restrict or amend or eliminate restrictions on on-street parking, which we're dealing with here. But there's square, there's distance issues and number of homes issues. So it was better safe than sorry that the mayor recues herself. That's all. So we're good.
So, but did I, so I, I could have participated. Is that what I'm understanding?
I would have to do a, a number count and get out my tape measure and figure all that out. It seems likely that you could have, from what I know, but.
It's about 320 feet.
Did you just Google Earth it?
I use a different program.
Okay.
Okay, well, whatever. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, on to new business. Our first item of new business is the fiscal year 2019, 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Staff, can you please give the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. In every year, in accordance with US government, United States of America government accounting standards, the city conducts an independent audit. You recall that we have an independent firm that does that for us. We awarded that contract several years ago, so they've done three in a row or several in a row. They do a report and go through all of our financial statements every year and, and make sure that we're doing everything right, following all the accounting standards and following the procedures and make sure that we're representing all of our financial statements accurately and to the fullest extent possible, complying again with the financial statements in accordance with the Government Accounting Standards Act. So their audit this year was conducted by Gruber and Associates. They have submitted this report, prepared, prepared this report for us. They note no deficiencies in internal control or non-compliance detected during the audit, which is a good reassurance. So for transparency purposes, that's good for the public to know. The, they did recommend three, they came, three general recommendations, all of which we concur with and will be implementing, those reflecting how we, what we record in accounting records and how they, they do those. I'm certainly prepared to respond, provide detail on each one of them, the three of them. But there's none of them that are problematic or anything of materially significant prob, problems. So this is an information item presented to the council every year. It is subsequently filed with the state. So the state will see this and it is due to the state in early this, in the spring each year. So we will comply with that. We have sent an advanced copy just to make sure they know we're doing our job. But it covers the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. And that it is, though I can answer any questions. But again, I think it's a, it's something that every year, and I think the council can take assurances that we are recording despite the transitions in financial staff, three finance managers or directors since I've been here. But we are doing a good job of keeping records and doing them the appropriate way. And I think the public can be assured by these audits that we're doing such. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do we have any comments or questions of staff?
My thanks to Jim and Steve.
Great job. Good job. Thank you.
Any public comment on this?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, then.
Do you want to have a motion? We need a motion, a second to approve.
That's right, sorry. Is there a question? Sorry.
Don't move.
Second? Okay, perfect. Now we call the roll, sorry.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Great, okay. Second item of new business, concerns the authorization of COVID-19 vaccine super pod staffing. Steve, can you?
Yeah, this is, this is sort of an interesting one and I, I operate for a policy issue for the, and making my recommendation. The County of Orange is running the pods and I think Mayor Miles has talked about it at length. Eventually, they'll be putting on super pods throughout the county. There are 3.2 million people eventually that will have to be vaccinated. The county has a significant responsibility in that regard. They are doing, the county has committed to 50% funding. They're doing that through their staff, through the, all their, you know, buying temporary help contracts or whatever else they may do. They are then using other non-governmental organizations, et cetera, to compile 15% of the staffing. They are then subsequently, they've asked cities to contribute 35% of staffing. That consists of emergency managers, general staff, all those people that if you go to a pod that are directing you through, that are taking your registration, that are recording the documentation, that are making sure you're monitored. These are typically, they are, they're not medical professionals. They are just literally staff that are assigned out there. So what the county did is they're asking basically the cities to come up with 30 5% of the staffing. The staffing requirement for the cities in essence is 175 when you add those full sets of pods. So what they did was said, okay, they're going to make a respectful request to each of the cities based on a population base. So if you divide our share of that population, we are a point two. So technically, although we're participating, we're not being asked to provide anybody. We have, however, I have asked voluntarily if any one of the staff would be here, but since we only have five full-time staff that are here at a given time, it's, and you know, many of these are are professional staff and whatnot as far as planning or whatever. It, we would, we basically be shutting down City Hall in some area if we were to send them over. So what I have sort of believe, and I, I sort of offer this for the council's consideration is we are part of the county, we're part of the 3.2 million. We most certainly have very large, we have 6,000 residents, or 5,800 residents, that all of them, or at some point, we're going to want them, have them vaccinated. Ideally, we'd love to have a clinic over here, a smaller, you know, mobile clinic or something along the way. So I think there's a, a responsibility or a, a goal of getting some sense that the city has and we have as far as participating. Right now, we are not sending anybody over there and we technically aren't required to do so. However, to the extent that we want to have mobile clinics and we want to participate, we want to have them send and say, hey, Villa Park, you know, we're willing to send you some things. Then, then we, I think we, it increases our leverage to the extent that we can participate in this effort. Now, I could say that because there's a number of things financially that don't hurt us. So with respect to the, the financial implications, FEMA has pretty much guaranteed that they'll pay 100% of vaccination efforts. So to the extent that we were to dedicate somebody over there, we could probably claim it and go get claimed and reimbursement there. Furthermore, the federal government right now is, Congress is debating at the president's request, a $1.9 trillion package. And that package will involve 65 million that will be allocated toward the cities. If it is based on population base, which is CDVG, Community Development Block Grant Formulas, if that pans out to be that 65 million and formulated that way, which it appears, at least the House has already approved that, the President said he wants to approve it and there are probably sufficient votes in the Senate to approve it, Villa Park would get to the tune of $1.1 million allocated us to address COVID-related issues. $1.1 million is a lot of money for a budget that only has $4 million a year annually that we spend. So that being said, I really think there's the ability that we certainly can reimburse. So what I would like to propose, and I am proposing and recommending, is that we go ahead and spend up to $50,000 and dedicate some staff who's not ours to the pods and in our name. How do we do that? Well, there are a number of cities that have told me that they've had to furlough or lay off people. So I am more than willing to make an agreement or have an agreement with either a, the, another city who has had to lay somebody off or the Employment Development EDD, the State EDD, or whoever, or even a temporary agency to help get somebody employed for, from now until July for $50,000 to help us participate in our name as Villa Park. So that to the extent that there is a collective effort. So that to the extent that there is a collective effort to vaccinate, Villa Park is standing at post during our time. And I think that's sort of an important uh, message that we send out. Certainly the fact financially that we can, it appears we are going to be able to afford it without having to affect any of our core operations. Uh, I think that's sort of what I'm I'm recommending. So with that, I'm just asking for authorization. I have a number of cities, a discussion with them, and they have indicated they, they like the idea, they're like, for instance, park and rec people, et cetera, have been, have been furloughed or laid off or don't have hours. Those people still have and live in in Orange County, and and you know, there are um, they have a need. So anyway, long story short, uh, I would like to recommend that we um, make that. I just got a note too. Alyssa, could you put, Robbie, he just got knocked off for some reason, if we can add him back on? There we go. Okay, so with that, I would recommend uh, approving up to fifty thousand dollars so that, and give me authority to contract or subcontract with a city, another city, to allow, or EDD, or whoever I can get to bring back or somebody in the workforce, an Orange County resident type of thing, to represent Villa Park at the pods and provide a contribution toward the vaccination effort in Villa Park, I mean, in the County of Orange. So I'm certainly available to answer questions, and I offer that for the council's consideration.
Thank you. And um, what I can add to that, so on these Friday calls with Dr. Chow and um, they are constantly and have been constantly talking about the need for volunteers. And as um, a mayor of a small city sitting on these Zoom calls, you know, as much as it is, you know, I want to raise my hand and say, we'll, we'll volunteer, we'll volunteer, as Steve had mentioned, it's really difficult for our size city because of the number of staff we have to be able to go ahead and step up. So I think this is an excellent way for us to be able to show we are a team, team player. It's an excellent, excellent way for us to get, to put our, you know, do a little bit of, 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 you know, work on our part so that we're, we're going to definitely benefit from that as well. And it's a, it's a great thinking outside of the box way to do it, whether you um, um, whether we authorize authorizing him the, the money to do so, whether he's able to do that through a temp agency, or whether he's able to do that by, you know, re-employing some of the people that furlod, I think this is a win-win for everyone. And then it, it also makes us feel good that we are contributing to this whole entire, you know, pandemic that is affecting every single one of us, so. Um, those are my two comments. Uh, anyone else has anything that they would like to add?
A question.
There for Tim?
I'm wondering if, uh, given that this may be money that's allocated to Villa Park, it might be possible to look for somebody within Villa Park, whether it's a um, a resident who's uh, looking for work, or if there was something we could do to, to reach out within our community to find somebody that would be looking to fill this position.
Okay, yeah.
That, that's certainly an idea. We could put out the, the, the feelers, but we did put out feelers of anybody who might be interested, and we did get, got no response from any residents. The other concern is that they become, when they go there, even though they are working at the pod, they become the responsibility of whoever is sending them. So uh, if I were to say, the, the logic of having them under a temporary agency or a city, or another city, is they would maintain that supervision responsibility. And I wouldn't have to be burdened or burden my staff with having to make sure they showed up for work or those kinds of things. So that's something that allows me a, a little bit of latitude there without impacting us. So that was sort of the thought process I used there. But I, I certainly appreciate what you're saying. Um, I, I'm not aware of anybody, if there is somebody that was looking for work that was laid off. Um, I certainly would be more than happy to bring them into the fold. That's not something I'm, I'm, I'm not sort of cornering the market and aiming at somebody else.
If we do that, are we responsible for benefits and other things that are associated with that employee?
Um, we, we don't bear the responsibility if they're on someone else's payroll.
I understand that, but if we bring somebody.
If we bring somebody on, yes, we would assume some sort of liability or issue. That's sort of my thinking along those lines as well. Thank you, uh, Councilman.
Any other comments?
Yeah, uh, fifty thousand dollars seems like a steep allocation for a city with less than six thousand residents. And also, I recall uh, seeing uh, information provided by the um, I don't know if it was ACCOC or the League of Cities, but Villa Park has one of the lowest per capita uh, tax revenues in the uh, in the county, because we, you know, we don't have car dealerships and hotels and a lot of other things that generate large amounts of tax revenue. We basically get by just on uh, property tax, and we only get, you know, eleven cents out of every dollar that our residents pay in property tax. Uh, is fifty thousand dollars uh, you know, kind of steep for Louisville Park?
Well, Councilman, that's a good point. I, the reason I came up with fifty thousand is between now and July, which the project is running through. That's five months, and I figured ten thousand dollars a month as a cap uh, is, you know, it doesn't have to be fifty thousand, but that's sort of where I was, was aiming for, if you divide that down, if, you know, sort of along those lines. I certainly am not married to any number along those lines. Um, I also am incognizant of the fact that um, you, you want to make sure that you can pay someone to be there and and will be there. So I, I certainly leave that up to the council's discretion.
Well, certainly we'd be contribute to a pot, not to an individual, but um, you know, we just had a discussion about uh, you know, a guy that's, you know, one of our residents that has been after our city to fix a street for fifty, almost fifty years. And fifty thou- if we've got fifty thousand dollars, uh, that could go a long way towards that fixing that street.
I, I would offer that the money I'm proposing that would use would be restricted from the feds. It is restricted to COVID-related activities. You cannot use it. It's specifically stated in the legislation as drafted that you can't use it for infrastructure. So we, I just returned thirty-two thousand dollars to the County of CARES Act money that we were unable to spend. So we have money that we get from these, that they're giving us for relief aids or whatever. And I believe that this is something that would be um, it's basically money that we could potentially having to return anyway, if we don't spend it. So like I said, if we get a million one dollars, we're going to be spending it on a lot of other things that are not infrastructure or not core mission things that have to do with, with uh, COVID. So that's sort of the world we live in right now. I don't control the finances, but that's sort of it, this would not affect our general fund, and I certainly would not go after our general fund or any of our general operating expenses. Uh, Councilmen, that's, I protect those uh, fervently as you know.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion?
I'll approve the recommendation that of city manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
Steve, can you call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes five zero, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the manager report, uh, item fourteen, information from city manager and or city staff. So, um, Steve?
Yes, thank you. We have um, a number of issues that are outlined there. Uh, in addition to our, I was going through it this morning, a list of things that we have next, I wanted to make the announcement. On the, and the ninth, we have that meeting regarding the housing element update. Um, then we will have um, the um, we're working on the speed issues that the mayor uh, mentioned earlier and and, and Councilman Rossini had talked about. Uh, we also have uh, the housing, I'm sorry, the um, COVID activities that we're doing, we're preparing our budget as well for next year. Um, so there's a number of things going on. I'm certainly prepared to answer any questions. The one thing I did previously mention, and I was something that we will have to try and figure out. Um, the legislation as appears by mid-March, Congress will approve it of some kind. And I think if not a million one, we're going to be looking at some substantial, possibly seven-digit number. Um, and that's much larger. Uh, we've already given out um a quarter of a million dollars to our businesses. We certainly would want to give more to our businesses, but not a million dollars is an awful lot of money, and I think we're going to have to create uh, creatively come up with as a council and and staff ideas of how our residents can be assisted with a nexus toward COVID. So I think I would, I would ask that you guys start thinking of those types of things. Um, and sort of, I, I'd be happy to discuss any of them, and I think we, but those are things. The, the only good news, I will say, is this is going to have less restriction, so if you can make a nexus to COVID, you're good. The, the other side is, you, doesn't look like we have any sort of specific timeframe, whereas CARES Act said December of last year, this appears to be multi-year funding. So we can do it over multi-years. So this is, this is going to be sort of an interesting exercise, and I, I'm going to ask that I, the creative minds of the council help me on this, because this is a a lot of money, and we want to make sure our benefits, I mean, our residents benefit to the furthest extent possible. So that's just something that to keep in mind. Uh, it's coming um probably within the next council meeting, we may know exactly, because I think Congress is looking to approve something by mid-March. So I would be prepared to answer any questions, and I thank you for your support.
Council, any questions?
Do we have an idea of um, businesses or areas within Villa Park that have been the hardest hit by COVID and where money would be the most um, beneficially spent?
Yeah, we have, like I said, as part of the, the Business Recovery Grant Program, we've done two phases of those. And then we've given out over a quarter of a million dollars on those, and they've submitted applications and and those types of things. I mean, um a million dollars would far exceed that, so we, we, that would be a lot. Um, but we do know those businesses have continued to suffer a little bit, although we are seeing some recovery with some of the things opening with outdoor dining and and uh, you can see some indoor nail places, and those have reopened. So you're seeing some activity, but they're still suffering. So there's still a need to will need to put some in there. The question is, where do we draw that line? So that's, that's going to be the challenge is, what do we make? If, if I were to say, um, you know, we, we've already given a lot of, a lot of, we've given uh, like I said, quarter of a million dollars, eighteen, nineteen businesses, I think, have received a lot of the money here. So uh, again, they're probably still suffering, so there's a, there's a need, but how far that is, I, I can't with specific detail tell you at this time.
It's been a year. It's been a year.
Yeah.
Been a year.
Anybody else?
A lot of people.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Uh, last item fifteen, Mayor and Councilmember Matters. Um, let's start with Councilman Colacott.
Okay, I attended a couple of ACC OC meetings, that's the American Council of Cities, Orange County Chapter. Um, it's uh, kind of similar to the League of Cities, only it's uh, just for cities uh, within Orange County. Uh, I participated on two of the committees. One is the Energy, Environment and Water Committee. And it was brought up that there's currently an assembly bill out um that would uh, require that uh, all of the state's waters be fishable and swimmable and drinkable. Um, this uh, trumps the uh, federal standard of that all uh, surface water should, at least federal waters be fishable and swimmable. Um, if you think about it, if uh, if waters also have to be drinkable, that means that the water coming from our storm drains needs to be drinkable, which is uh, pretty, pretty much a non-achievable standard that would put us in unavoidable non-compliance. But uh, my understanding is the League of Cities and ACCOC is uh, opposing that, but um, it's still out there, uh, a potential threat for our city. Um, on the, I also participated on the Housing Committee meeting, and uh, I'd like to note that about three years ago, Councilman Pitts and Rossini and I participated in a council that where we um adopted an ordinance banning short-term rentals in the city of Villa Park. And we looked around and we ant- we saw that some cities that were already um hosting short-term rentals were experiencing problems. And uh, we didn't want those problems in Villa Park. And if you've been following the news uh, in Orange County, there are other cities that are, including one that's adjacent to ours that are experiencing some issues, some additional issues with uh, short-term rentals. So we anticipated a problem, we took action and dodged uh, what could have been a significant bullet. Um, like during the uh, Housing Committee meeting, a neighboring city noted that uh, accessory dwelling units are already creating parking issues in residential areas. Um, we should be on the lookout for that as well as we implement our ADU program, and um, I believe that our residents ex- uh expect that this council will anticipate the impacts of ADUs. That will come with ADUs and identify and implement measures to mitigate those issues. And maybe that's something we can talk about at our uh, Housing Meeting on the ninth. Um, with that, I'd like to uh, conclude by noting that twenty twenty-one marks my fortieth year in Villa Park. I had no idea what to expect when I came here. I just, my wife and I at the time just found a house that we liked. And um, we're pleasantly surprised with what we found here, and uh, of course, I've been here for forty years, so that must mean I like it. Um, as do many other residents, we have the uh, outside of the two leisure worlds in Orange County, we have the highest median age of any city in Orange County, which means that when people land here, they like, they like it so much, they stay. And uh, I think that's, you can't get a better compliment or better um uh, you know, recommendation for a city than that, once people land here, it's like, okay, I'm home, I'm going to stay. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Councilman Pitts?
I don't have a whole lot to report. I just uh, appreciate uh, Saturday and the the work that the foundation is doing to create events that uh, we can all participate in. You know, with diversity and inclusion in mind. Um, it was a fun event. I was there with you and, and Steve, and I think everybody had a good time and enjoyed people's beating on the drums and, and especially the little, little kids. It was, it was really fun to see them having so much fun and be out, outside amongst uh, other people, so. Uh, appreciate that, but I appreciate what the foundation is doing, investing in, in our community.
Thank you. Councilman Rossini?
Then a report, just hope that everybody uh, stays healthy, stays safe, and um those that are unemployed, hopefully they get back to work soon, and uh, um, let's just hope for a better future.
Agreed.
Uh, I also have uh, not a long report. Uh, just wanted to say thanks to everybody out there for um, continuing to, to stay safe and um, also for the wonderful event. I'm sad that I missed that, uh, but I look forward to future uh, community service events that are um, are community foundation events, community service foundation events. I got it.
It's a mouthful. It's a mouthful.
Yeah, uh, yes, the foundation event was, was awesome. Um, I was very honored to, to participate and appreciate the foundation for its work. Um my report's very small as well. We, um, I had my, my first um, virtual coffee with the mayor, and um I had a dozen people show up, so I was uh, extremely happy with that, and uh uh, they expressed um, you know, that they liked the idea, and um, residents met residents. Uh, there was question and answer, it was sharing opportunity, and um, again, just um, enhancing the goal of um, trying to make us more accessible. So the next one is going to be March sixteenth at nine AM. Um, and uh, the Zoom will be on the, on the city website as well, so uh, hopefully um, as we go on, we can transition from Zoom to perhaps an actual location um, alternating in the city, so we can patron different um, um, businesses here within Villa Park, so that we can um, you know, support small, support small businesses. So I want to say um, thank you to everyone tonight. I liked our discussions. I'm glad we're able to have discussions. Um, I think we have some, some good uh, things for next month, especially the part about, you know, making sure that we're going to start really trying to pay attention to uh, making sure our residents um, recognize about um, asking for permission, not for forgiveness. Uh, and efforts in there, and then also all of us trying to communicate about um, safety and making sure that we slow down or what needs to happen in order to make sure that we keep our residents, pedestrians, our homes um, safe. So uh, with that, we will adjourn until the next regular city council meeting on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM. I want to say thank you, and I hope everyone has a great night. That's it.
You as well.
Good night.
Good night.